Workshop for the Randolph County Board Education. Mr. Hall, if you will, would you like to do a little word of prayer?
Our heavenly Father, we come before you giving thanks for all the blessings that we've received. Father, we ask that you be with our students, our teachers, our staff members and our parents and their families during this time of uncertainty and challenges. Father, we ask that you be with us as board members, give us wisdom so that we can make appropriate decisions for this job that we have, that will be in the best interest of our students and our faculty members. We ask these things in Christ's name.
The pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Item one is the, I give you resolution for the superintendent's compensation expenses that would go into effect at the beginning of the next superintendent's term. If you look over it, we can either vote on it in the meeting or we can have another meeting after, you know, down the road or whatever y'all decide to do. But, or we can amend the agenda to board meeting to add to that. So, we'll just give you that for information there. Purpose is wherever y'all decide, I won't do. It just has to be done before the November 3rd.
It has to be done before he takes office.
Yeah.
January.
January 1st, yeah.
All right, we got time to talk about it.
Okay. So, we don't want to, you don't want to add it to the, do it later. Okay. Yeah, Larry.
Lerner.
Herring.
Herring.
Herring to discuss the Schneider Electric Management.
Our chairman has stepped out for just a second.
Okay. Where would you like me to sit?
You can come right here in the front.
Okay.
And do whatever you need to do, if you need anything other than just...
I printed it out for everybody to make it easy.
Yes, sir.
Look for somebody.
Let me have a seat because I got one more.
Somebody isn't trying to say their own. It serves anybody.
All right, now, this is Larry Herring from Schneider Electric. I've talked to Larry for the past couple of years, talking on about some of our things here as far as upgrading, some old lighting, some things. A couple of you may be familiar with what Train proposed a few years ago, but this is totally different from what Train did. And I'll let him explain the difference between it. But this is something what we could look at for getting some improvements and how this company, you know, works about that. Larry, I'll let you have it.
Thank you. So, just to give you all an overview of who we are and what we've done. So, Schneider Electric, we started working with K-12 education 15 years ago in Alabama. Our first client was Dr. Mackey, actually, when he was at Jacksonville City Schools. Since that time, we've worked with just over 40 systems across the state of Alabama, addressing anything in and around the building that you can imagine. Recently, we just did a lot of security upgrades at the Kev County Schools. We've done roofing, we've replaced window walls, sealed that up, HVAC replacements, lighting. So, talk about that a little bit more. And then, I know Mr. Jacobs just said that y'all had an experience with Train. I want to walk y'all through what the differences are on how we approach things versus how they approach things and then answer any questions that you all have. So, if you go ahead and flip to the third page of this document. So, common limitations that we see districts have. So, when we go about developing a project, we realize that there's three things that you as a school district face every day, every week, every month, every year. Those three things are either, one, your maintenance staffs don't have the time to go out and address these things. I know you all here have two gentlemen on your maintenance staff that are in charge of basically fixing everything throughout the district. When something goes wrong, it's on them to make sure it gets fixed. So, time to them is very valuable. The second thing is money. The state's just not giving you more money every year to go out and address everything that you need. So, if we can provide revenue back into your budget to help address some of the things that you all needed to take care of across the district, we look at doing that. And then, the third thing is some districts just don't have the expertise to go out and do it on their own. And we bring that expertise to the table and then partner with the district to help you address what it is that you're looking to be addressing. So, does anybody have any questions about that? All right, then we'll go forward to the next page, page four, how it works. So, what we typically do is we look at your overall operating budget. We realize that your second biggest expenditure every year is behind teacher salaries is your utility budget. So, if we can reduce that by a considerable amount, that's putting a lot of money back into the district and allowing you to make the upgrades necessary across the district. So, we take a look at that and then we take a look at what you're spending currently just to run and operate and keep things running. So, what are you outsourcing? I know y'all are fortunate enough, Mr. Daniel has a lot of experience and expertise in fixing HVAC equipment. Some districts aren't so lucky. So, just looking at ways we can reduce that operating budget. Typically, we can save districts anywhere between 15 and 40 percent on their utility bills. And then, I think where a lot of districts see the value in this is that we're one partner. Y'all are probably used to seeing an experience where there is an architect, then you hire an engineer, then the engineer hires a contractor. And then, from there, once you have your contractor, they're issuing subcontract. So, you get into a situation where everybody starts pointing the finger at each other when something goes wrong and you don't know who to go to. So, in this process, we act as the, we do the design and we actually construction manage the project. So, it's basically if something goes wrong, you know exactly who to go to to solve that problem. And then, the final thing is that the track success. So, our savings are guaranteed for up to 20 years. So, with that being said, if we say Randolph County Schools, we're going to save you $100,000, we save you $80,000 a year in the first year, we're going to write you a check for the $20,000 difference. Does anybody have any questions about any of these?
Is that just the first year or every year?
Every year for 20 years. Yes, sir.
20 years.
20 years, yes, sir. That's with the Alabama Code 4116, 140 through 44 that we operate under. It allows the guarantee for up to 20 years. If you go ahead and flip to the next page, so how do we go about developing these projects? So, you all here in the district, we spent last week walking your schools. We had our engineering team out here and your maintenance staff walked around with us to point things out. So, what we typically do is, one, how do we generate that revenue and how do we save you money? So, those things usually include upgrading LED lighting. That's going to really reduce how much you're spending, you know, year or day to day. The other thing is a building automation system. And this provides, one, the energy savings, but the other benefit of it is, and I know Mr. Jacobs has some experience from his previous district that he worked in, where at the end of the day, you're right now relying on your teachers to go and turn their unit off when they leave the school. That's, I personally know how I am, that's the last thing I'm thinking about when I leave work, is making sure that the HVAC is turned off. So, what this does is it allows you to set schedules. So, say you want the building, you know everybody's going to get there at 7:00 in the morning. You'd schedule it to come on at 6:00 in the morning. It would either cool or heat the building depending on the time of the year to what the set point is. And then, from there, we usually give the teachers a few degrees of up and down to work with them to get comfortable. So, that's another way to create revenue. And then, the third is just sealing up around the envelope. A lot of districts, kids are opening and closing doors all day. Those door sweeps get worn out around windows unsealed. So, making sure that's all sealed up really improves the comfort of the learning environment. So, once we have that, those things cost less but generate a lot of savings. We partner those with some of those more capital intensive needs that you all have. And those include HVAC renovations or replacements, roofing repairs. I know y'all have a few roofs in the district that y'all are currently looking at getting replaced. And then, window replacements. So, these are just a few items that we've noticed walking your schools. And what that does is that creates a comprehensive solution where you're driving the revenue to pay for the things that actually are more capital intensive. Do y'all have any questions on that? Okay, so, just to give you an idea, Ben, this is based on accounting documents. We just actually got done getting the bills from Ms. Waters. And what we did was take, we took the accounting statements from what you all had spent last year and I tried as best I could to break it down by each school. So, as you see here, you're spending about $624,000 roughly a year on your power. Your water, you're spending another $60,000 roughly, and your gas is another $60,000. So, if you go to the next page, what I've done is, based on other projects we've done in the state and just benchmarking you all against them, I haven't had a chance to look at the actual bills yet and determine what this looks like, but just to quantify the opportunity, y'all are spending about $745,000 a year in your utilities. From there, if we were able to reduce your consumption by 20 to 30 percent, which I feel is probably right on par with what we're going to find in a district like yours just on previous projects, that's going to generate $149,000 to $224,000 a year in savings. So, when you look at that, that's $4 to $6 million over the 20-year guaranteed period. So, that's $4 to $6 million that you're not going to have to go to your taxpayers, you're not going to have to float a bond, that's $4 to $6 million that you can take out of that energy savings and actually go get work done out of that budget. So, what that does is, from there, we look at finding an upfront funding solution. The way we do these projects is it doesn't cost anything to the district upfront to get the work done unless you choose to go that route. So, typically, and I think...
Ms. Waters has been through this before.
Typically, what we, what we'll do is, we'll allow a district to go and they'll do a taxes and police purchase. They'll match their payment to what they're going to save each year. So, it allows the district to stay budget neutral.
Do you have anything to add on that from your previous experience? I know you had some... Yeah, I know, I know, so, yeah, because y'alls was, y'alls was a little bit different than what we, than what we typically do. But, just to give you an idea, I've written, what I did here was I wrote a few things down that we noticed through your schools that could be upgraded.
If you go flip to the next page, what I've done is I've called out two separate projects that similar districts, size-wise to you all. Bullock County Schools, south of here, just south of Montgomery. What we did with them was, they were looking, their, the community was asking for them to build a new school. They didn't have the funds necessary to do that. So, what they saw was this is a financial solution to fix their schools now, but also not cost the district any money so they could start saving towards a comprehensive campus down the road. So, what we did was we addressed roofing at three of their schools. We did LED lighting district-wide, we did automation systems, some HVAC renovations. And they had a lot smaller utility budget than you all, but what we were able to do is generate 24, 24 percent savings and $2.7 million over 20 years. Another example is Wilcox County Schools. And the reason I included this one was they are almost the exact same size and amount of schools that you all have. What they were looking at doing was, they had a lot of HVAC equipment throughout the district that just didn't work at all, but they had no way to pay for it. And the bond money that they were getting wasn't going to be enough to cover the amount of HVAC renovations that they actually needed. So, what we did was, we figured out, how do we save as much money as possible so we can address and get the classrooms actually comfortable for the students? And one thing that we focus on in our projects is finding out how to make every learning environment consistent so a student's not going from one classroom to the next, where one teacher's got their thermostat set at 68, the next one has it at 80, and this classroom has white light and this one has yellow light. So, just making it consistent so it's easier for the students as they're going from classroom to classroom. Do y'all have any questions on that? Okay, so, how is this different than what your previous experience was? So, one thing that we are big on is that we don't risk comfort in the classroom to generate savings. We want your students to be comfortable, we want your teachers to be comfortable. So, it's important for us that we find a set point that you as an administration and a board find is comfortable for your students because, and your teachers, because we don't want them sitting in the classroom sweating or freezing to death all day because that would inhibit their learning ability. The second thing is, the guarantee on the savings isn't tied to a maintenance agreement. Sometimes, companies that do what we do, they'll say, here's the savings guarantee, but you have to have a maintenance agreement with us to maintain your HVAC equipment for this guarantee to stay in place. We do not do that. I think our biggest differentiator from the other companies that do this, though, is that we're completely product agnostic. So, we'll go to your maintenance staff and say, hey, guys, what is the type of equipment that you like to use and you like to work on? And are there local vendors that you're used to dealing with? And we'll try to work with them on this project and keep the jobs here at local Randolph County. That's big to us. We're not going to say, here, this is a mischievous piece of equipment, we're pushing this product. That's not how we make money, but we want you to be happy and your staff to feel comfortable knowing what they're working on. The next thing is making sure that the company that you're working with maintains minimum qualifications to deliver the project. And then, the final thing is, I always tell school boards this. When we go to work on a project and develop a project, it's important that we have your input during the development process because if I come to you and say, here is your $5 million project and it's not exactly what you told me to deliver to you financially and it doesn't address the needs of the district, then we're getting nowhere. And at the end of the day, you wouldn't be happy with the project five years from now. So, this is a 20-year partnership and it's imperative to us to make sure that it is addressing exactly what you need as a district and also meeting your financial parameters. So, what I like to do is, early on in the process, sit down with your staff and figure out financially, what do you expect this project to be? And then, build a project that addresses your needs around the financial parameters that y'all set forth. And then, on the next slide, I walked through this a little bit earlier. Didn't, if I can change the page here. Didn't really get into it much, but this is just a visual representation of what you're used to in a school district, where you have the multiple different vendors that do different things. And every project that you take on as a school board, you're going to have somebody different working on it. What we like to do is provide just a comprehensive solution where we're administering the work as a partner of yours and we're talking and collaborating the entire time. Does anybody have questions on this? And then, on the next page, I just included a little bit about our track record in the state. Like I said, we've done 46 successful projects in Alabama. 99.6 percent of our projects that either meet or exceeded their savings guarantee every year. We've had 15 years of sponsorship to AASB, SSA, ASBO and ASPMA. And then, we have 100 dedicated employees to the state of Alabama. We've secured over $40 million in grants and rebates. We've had zero litigation and lawsuits. And across the state of Alabama, we have over $325 million in savings guarantees. So, our track record in the state is, I feel very strong. And we've worked really hard to maintain all of our references across the state because it's important to us, if you're not happy, then other people are going to know you're not happy because you all talk at conferences. And we have a vested interest in making sure that the project's performing how we say it is going to. And then, the final thing is the timeline. So, today, just wanted to come in here, tell you all a little bit about what we do and how we operate. We're currently building out a business case analysis and report for you all. So, we've walked your sites with our engineering team last week. We're gathering information from your maintenance staff, from superintendent, CSFO, and also Mr. Daniel in IT, and we're talking through some security things with him as well. So, just trying to figure out, what is the opportunity, quantify the savings? And then, from there, the next step would be to select us as your partner. From there, we would move into a design. The only, the first time that a financial commitment is made by the district is when we actually start designing the work. So, you'll have the opportunity to go through, we'll share the report with you that we generate to identify what are the savings, what's the opportunity? And then, from there, you all would decide, okay, do we want to move forward and go into design with Schneider? But you'll have a lot, all the information necessary to make that decision. After that, it would take us about six to seven months to develop a project for a district of your size. And what we look, what we would be looking at was installing the work starting next summer. Do y'all have any questions?
Talk about some of the, I know you're working with some local systems around us, somebody locally that y'all are talking to now by name and title.
Yeah, so, we looked at, I think, around here, we've worked with Alex City, four phases now. I think they're a great person to ask about. Anything you can think that we've done in a project, I think Alex City would be a great example. We worked with Piedmont north of here, we worked with, actually Chambers County. We worked with Chambers County and that's a good, similar-sized system to you all. I think we had a great project over there. So, I mean, there's several different projects that we've worked on around here. I would encourage you to ask them about their experiences working with us. The one other thing that I wanted to talk about, because I think Mr. Jacobs found this really interesting, was on the next page, student engagement. So, when we go and do a project, we don't want to just do a construction project for you. We want to get your students involved. Y'all are an educational institution. You're here to educate students and get them either ready for college or the real world. So, what we like to do is figure out ways to help educate the students and share with them what we're doing in this project. So, we've come up with programs like Concern My Planet where we get elementary-age students involved in the project. They have a vest that they wear where one student may have the vest for the day. It's like a line leader, they're in charge of making sure the lights get turned out before they get to lunch or recess. In the older middle school and high school age students, we've done shadowing of our engineers. We've done shadowing of our construction team during install. We've done career days. We've gotten in front of classes and anything you can imagine, just to get the students involved. It's really important to us to make sure that they're understanding what's going on in the district. And then, the final piece of it, on the next two pages, for your own reading at your convenience, we always do some branding and marketing on the project to make sure that the community knows what it is that the board's looking at doing and how you plan on addressing the deferred maintenance needs in a fiscally responsible manner. So, at this time, I just wanted to see if any of y'all had any questions for me.
You know, my problem with the last one we had was, when we do all these new units and everything right there and we do this where we set up and, you know, they last, we put all new in here, 15 years later and when it's all, we get to the end of this or whatever our term period is right here, it seems like all of our units are going to be the same, even the same age and it's going to be a big, you know, I hate to look down the road, but hopefully we'll be here and somebody's going to have to assume, take over units that are all 15 years old and the same age. And what they're going to do, that's, if they're in the position that we are financially, they're not going to be able to do this. They're not, I mean, they're not going to be, they're going to have every unit across the campus out of date and, you know, inefficient or whatever, breakdown. So, that was my concern last time.
Yep.
And the other group, you know, they charged us, what, $40,000 just to look at? And we had to write them a check, you know?
Okay, so, I can address both of those. First, we're on mechanical replacements. The only time we're going to replace a piece of equipment or recommend replacing a piece of equipment is if it is going to fail in the next one to two years. Outside of that, there's no reason to ask you to replace equipment that's 15 years old and is working fine. Because if it's still working, then why are you going to spend your money to replace it? That just wouldn't be wise on your part. On the, on the design contract fee like that they charged you all, we're legally required under the statute of the law to bring you back a project that can be paid for out of savings. So, essentially, it has to, at a minimum, we have to bring you back a project that the savings can cover the cost of the project. If not, we can't charge you an exit fee legally. So, budgetarily, it's going to leave you all in the same place. It has to leave you all in the same places as you would be had you not done the project.
And you told me one time you had like one system where it didn't work out and y'all wrote them a check.
Yes, so typically, what will happen is, if a system doesn't meet the savings guarantee, we'll write them a check, but we can usually figure out why they didn't meet it and then go and fix it right then and there. Because if it keeps happening, then we're keeping, having to write checks. That's not what we want to do, that's horrible for us as a business. So, it's in our vested interest to go find the problem and fix it.
So, really, there's no burden on the board because you're going to find the savings and that's going to be, there's no cost really for it.
No, financially...
Financially, we're...
Probably there will be a cost.
There's, no, sir, there's no...
You're, what's your, so, the cost of saving is turning around and paying what you're leasing? So, okay, we saved $100,000 this year and our payment for the lease is $75,000. So, we count out on top $25,000. Or it just kind of breaks even?
Right.
I mean, you're not, it's more than likely going to be even, you're not going to win. I mean, it's just going to be...
My...
Whatever you budgeted is going to stay at that because they're guaranteeing that they're going to save you exactly what your payment is going to be.
Yes, sir.
And the maintenance.
So, maintenance, on y'all's end, we work on, so after the project, this is usually where our clients find the most value is, post-project, we don't finish installing it and say, all right, Randolph, it's your project, good luck with it. We have training where we'll train your maintenance staff on how to operate the system. And then, in the event that your maintenance staff has somebody that retires, because it's a 20-year partnership, when the new person comes in, we would then train the new maintenance staff on how to operate the system. And we've trained everybody from maintenance staff to superintendents to principals. Depends on the level of who you want to have access to the system. But, we try to make it as easy on your maintenance staff as possible.
If you have fans go out on the end and it's out of warranty, hard talk?
Yes, sir.
It's all our, right?
Yes, sir, just like if you do any other type of mechanical replacement.
I've had units make it 25 years. I've had units make it twenty-five years and I've had them make it seventy.
I'm looking with another school district actually across the state, Winfield City Schools. At three units that have lasted forty years when they're expecting to say it was twenty. So, I mean, we see all the time, that's, that's, like I said, we're not gonna recommend replacing a unit that is working just fine, there's, there's no.
Well, that was with Train, correct me wrong, they were gonna come in here and take out units that was working fine and replace them and, and we're gonna be all the same. Even age units across board and that's kinda worried me because I don't want to dump something on the next.
So.
And then another thing too, Train wanted to replace them with Trant.
With Train units, that's, that's where they make their money.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
So, that's where we're different than, than that. We like to make it as collaborative as possible, so.
And I knew there's been a bad taste in several offices' mouth from, from Trant.
When they talk to some of these other stuff together.
And I have, you know, we've got a bad superintendent's conference. You know, and I've spent a lot of time with Larry, uh, talking with him for the last, uh, since I, since I came, since I, uh, started serving.
One thing I can do is, I know we have S S A coming up in two weeks. I can get a few of the districts that we work with, superintendents, get them together for dinner with you all. And then for you as a board, um, next time there's a board conference, hopefully in person sometime, maybe in the next five years. Um, no, but next time there's a board conference, I can try and get some other board members that we've worked with across the state to come to dinner together. Just so you all have the chance to talk about it.
And I'll talk Chambers County, I know, I used to teach in Chambers, I know the whole way.
Okay.
Yeah, Roanoke City's having a project too.
Yeah, we did a project with Roanoke City, two phases as well.
All right, I appreciate if I have any other, anybody has any other questions, I'll get them to you. If, uh, matter of fact, I'll just, I'll try to share your, like, email with you in case you have something.
Okay, yeah, I will.
You still got some copies drawn, though?
I do, I have, I got one card, I'll bring some more in. Um, I'll leave this with you and I'll bring in a few more and just sit them on the corner of the table here, I got more in the car. So, I appreciate y'all's time this afternoon and good luck with everything, I know y'all are dealing with a lot right now, so good luck with that.
I'll see you in about two weeks.
Okay, sounds good, thank you. Perfect. Thank you, sir.
Next item is, uh, discussed school reopen or going, coming back to school or whatever we're gonna do. Uh, at the end of the, uh, semester.
I talked.
How we gonna do that? And you thought nine weeks?
Nine weeks, yeah. You know, we said, we said originally that we were talking about it, you know, and look at it at, at a grading period, which the second nine weeks starts. It actually starts on Friday, but if we did anything, I would look at doing it on that next Monday, which is the twenty-sixth. Uh, I put it wrong on the agenda if it hadn't been changed, instead of the, uh, twenty-second, it would be the twenty-sixth of Monday.
Four weeks in there, four and a half.
That would be, bam, really three.
Three weeks we got in, or three weeks till nine, but.
Till nine is up.
Yeah.
So we're at, we're at six weeks. You know, and, uh, I'm sure all of y'all have heard the concerns from the public, uh, and concerns from students. And a lot of sharing with you, uh, our administrators, a lot of our administrators like what's going now, but they under, but they do understand that there is an issue with instruction. There's an issue with parents at home being able to work with your kids. But, you know, safety, our kids and our staff is number one thing. Just like, I'll, I'll just run over hard figures right here. Randolph County High School has had four positive tests and forty-one quarantined. Brock Mills has had zero positive and one quarantined. Widely, two positive, five quarantined. We died middle with zero positive and three quarantined. With a elementary, one positive, four quarantined. With an elementary, zero and zero, zero and five quarantined, I'm sorry. With an high school, we've had three positives and sixty-seven quarantined. The career center has had, uh, on their employees, zero, uh, positive and two quarantined. Bus drivers in transportation, zero positive and three quarantined. Central office, zero positive and three quarantined. Going back to employees for R C H S, zero positive, three quarantined. Brock Mills, one positive, five quarantined. Widely, one positive, two quarantined. We died middle, zero positive, one quarantined. With a elementary, zero positive, one quarantined. With an elementary, zero positive, three quarantined. With an high school, zero positive and two quarantined.
And now that's since the beginning of school.
I believe that is correct. This is what Joyce, she ran this for me today. So this is up-to-date information as we have. Uh, to kind of give you an idea, I'm not, uh, I, I receive a report from Tanner every day on the surrounding area. What I've done, I, I wrote down the four counties surrounded us, Randolph, Cleveland, Carroll and Heard. That seems to be who we get thrown up against, uh, and this can't be done with city system. But death by county, Randolph is seven, Cleveland one, Carroll fifty-two and Heard one. Positives, Randolph County's two hundred and ninety-six, Cleveland is forty-nine, Carroll one thousand seven hundred and fifty-two and Heard fifty-nine. That kind of equals out to about one dead for every fifty positive, every fifty positive cases. Now, that's just, that's Tanner now, you know, and I, and I, and I don't know if some of our people go to Opa-locka. You know, what, the report I get from Opa-locka, Opa-locka is just a bar graph of how many they have. It's not broken down into counties or anything, it's just, this is how many positive we have, how many we have on ventilators and things like that. And we don't get anything out of, uh.
I thought that whatever your driver's license had on it was pretty.
And, and, and I've heard that, so that makes very well make, that it always goes back to your county.
Home.
But, uh.
The county as a whole has had six hundred and seventy-two cases. What else?
At some point, we're gonna have to go back to school.
Right.
Because this virus is gonna be with us.
It ain't going away.
It's not going away.
I say, I say go back five, eight weeks, let it ride.
Well, I'm, I'm just gonna throw this in here and, and y'all can look at it, modify it, throw it out. You know, just gonna throw this out. Start next Thursday, that kind of gives our kids a chance to come back in and get their schedules sent soon. But I think they started on Thursday, didn't they? Start next Thursday, go Monday, Tuesday, off Wednesday, Thursday, Friday. Or go Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday and off Friday. In other words, you go four days a week, you're either off, uh, Wednesday or Friday. I will, I will say this about that, as, as you're talking. And logistically, it's gonna be hard to make a turnaround real quick. You know, and we've asked people to, you know, make a commitment. We, you know, where business is, we'd look at it and if we did any changes, we'd do changes at the nine weeks. Because right now we have people on A schedule and B schedule and we have bus routes scattered everywhere and we have people on ingenuity, we've got people on access. Logistically, it's gonna take a while to get it back together. Then you've got a week of nine, of, for kids that are there, nine weeks test. If you, if you take a kid that's been on ingenuity for five weeks, I mean, six, six weeks, seven weeks. Then he can't walk in and take a nine weeks test, that's good. So, logistically, what we talked about, logistically, I think the nine weeks is the best rate to do. I don't disagree with the, uh, the four days.
Cindy on the left here, they should tell us a few things about it.
I would.
What y'all.
Well, I, I mean, nobody was any more apprehensive than I was, I didn't want to go back, but so far, I mean, it's, and we don't. Most of our kids, especially in the elementary school, they don't even wear masks. And the teachers that, the people that have gotten it, haven't gotten it at school. Like the kid with their daughter that works at the hospital or.
Have y'all had any issue with teachers being quarantined and having a lot of hats and, because we don't have a lot of staff? I mean, a lot of subs, direct.
Um, well, at the elementary school, we've had, one teacher, her husband has it, she lives over here, I'm sure y'all know her. She hasn't been back, but then one teacher, the teacher that had it, she, uh, she was quarantined for like two weeks. And, and she wasn't reported, she didn't go be tested, but her daughter had it, so we knew she had it.
But they've had zero students?
No, we've had a handful.
Yeah, well, you gonna have.
One, one or two at elementary school.
But it's like I said, where you get it?
But most, that's the thing.
Walmart.
Are you getting it Walmart, are you getting it playground, I mean? Yeah, let me tell you my, my, my.
Hang on, it, it doesn't appear that the kids who have spread it at school, I'll put it that way.
My, my, my concern is, first of all, I, I don't think kids that are home are learning. They're not, if some, I mean, I, there are certain parents who's gonna sit down and read with their kids every night. And the other ninety-five percent of people are not, they're tired, they've been working all day.
But they don't know how.
And, and the other concern is, with these kids at home, I, I really, I really got a concern for the little boy or little girl that has no parent supervision, whether they're twelve, they're five, they're thirteen. And being bullied or taken advantage of or something's going on, because it's a whole different situation. And I'm not being negative, but the teachers.
Being truthful.
Teachers, yeah, I'm being truthful, because it happens and teachers are sort of like a parent's second eye. They come in and they recognize kids' moves, they're with them all day, they can see if they're upset, they can see marks. They, and, and we're not getting that right now for these kids that are staying at home. And it's a safety issue. And I know we run a risk bringing them back with COVID, but COVID's, looks like it's not a big risk to kids. It, although, you know, if you don't want to bring your kids back, I understand that's fine, but I, I, it really, you know, I have, I've had parents, had one parent call me and, uh, I mean, he, he's a big fella, he's real tough and all, he, he says, you know, I've seen a lot of stuff, but when I walked in and saw my second grader and we don't have good internet and he's crying because he thinks he's stupid because he can't do the work online and it's just, it brings them down. Ms. Carlisle was talking about the scores of the first graders and second graders, said they're just terrible right now because they're not learning. We've been on summer vacation since back in, with March, so, I mean, I, I just, I think time is, is, it, it, listen, if we started tomorrow, it, it wouldn't be too early for me.
Yeah, well, a daddy walked in, stole and said, my two kids go to bed crying every night and they hate school.
Oh, I, I can imagine.
That's, and this, this people is, they're both educated and all that, but, um. And I've had a parent said, we got three kids, our internet won't support three systems at one time. So we gotta work with one kid, the next kid, the next kid. She said, I don't cook supper anymore, I walk in and I'm working.
I was, a lot of people, some people told me they could go sit at Jack's parking lot up here, just to try to do work until their battery goes down on the computers.
Yeah.
You know, I mean, it's, it's just time to get them back in school. I mean, if everybody shared the same concern about getting them back in school, I'd like to make sure that everybody on board and there's such, there's some opposition I'd like to hear.
From these kids at home, staying that long by themselves. And you may have a twelve-year-old that's looking after a nine and eight-year-old.
This is, this is what I, I, when I said that about the going back and going four days and doing virtual one day. And, and y'all, y'all not wanna go back five days, I, I don't know, but I think it'll give, uh, it'll give our teachers a chance to maybe work a half a day on Thursday or whatever, on Wednesday. And then they would give them a good chance to sterilize the school on Wednesday, you know, midweek. Uh, same thing on Friday, just whoever the custodians group who did fogs the school or whatever, give them a chance to sterilize it again. But with that, it, uh, it sort of eases our kids back into school. And we can test it, monitor it, see what our, what our weekly cases are. And if we do that right, as I saw, for the next, getting into this, finishing up this, uh, nine weeks. If it works, we continue. If it blows up, we come off of it. But at least we, we gotta experiment at it sometimes.
And, and sterilizing the classrooms and, you know, teachers got all they do right now. I mean, it's real, and I just thought about with the care's money or something, that we could have people come in on Saturday and, and fog the rooms and, and we, you should use this money on Saturdays to pay somebody individual, somebody who wants to do it, make the money, go in there and clean, and clean the school.
One of the best things I've seen is buying the air scrubbers.
Well, and I think, well, we're, we're, the air scrubbers in every room and every office in the building.
They need to run at night, wanting to do ozone.
Okay.
I mean, they come, they run twenty-four hours a day.
Okay, and some concern is like what John was saying though, is the kids not being in school Monday through Friday or going four days a week? They can still find a babysitter for one of them days. And it's hard to find somebody or a daycare that will watch a kid one day.
It, it slowly becomes a test.
And it does.
And it, and it at least will keep the kids in touch with some of the technology that they're doing. They will be, you know, they will be, uh, you know, with the teacher, asking questions and all those things. And so that might help out a little bit with the tech, technology when they go home.
Okay, when, when you were talking about the nine weeks, uh, waiting until the end of the nine weeks, were you talking about, why could, why would it matter if we did group A and B that are blended? Make them the four, five day a week? Were you, were you talking about the virtual?
I would say the virtual people could stay, they would still have.
They would stay.
And to be honest, we, we may have some people that are on A or B that don't want to come then and they may want to go virtual. So I'm, I'm saying that for our counselors and our, and for Margie and, and, and things like that, it took forever to set this system up. You can't just flip a switch and it go away. You know, uh, you know, to piggyback on what Darryl said, we're going, on Wednesdays, we're out for, uh, Veterans Day. We're out Thanksgiving week. So you're, you're talking about four or five at the most extra Wednesdays for it to look at. And it would still leave us a time for our custodial staff to get in there and really clean the building like they're doing now. I don't really like a Friday or a Monday because, you know, if you're gonna go there four days, go five days.
My thing, my thing would go Wednesday, if you're gonna have to clean it Wednesday, they need to clean it before they come back Monday. That was my thing.
Well, I believe, their kids are normal, right?
Yeah.
They go week to two-ten.
Something like, yes, seven, four, nine.
Teachers work from two-ten to three-fifteen to get to the virtual and they do it in five days.
Yeah.
But their virtual took from hours.
Oh, yeah.
Their classroom teachers, we have, we have full-time teachers doing our virtual. The only time a classroom, a regular classroom teacher does any virtual is if they have a kid that's quarantined, you know, uh, then they would, could provide something there. But in Roanoke, for example, my understanding is, if you take science in your classroom, whoever in you that's assigned to your class, you teach them virtual too.
Well, everyone, everybody's got internet down there too, because the phone company provides it and people that can't play it, they got.
And I do, I do like the point of keeping teachers and kids with some virtual aspect on a regular basis. Because if we go back five days, the things that we're doing with our schoolables will stop.
Not much going on with them on, what I mean.
Yeah, they're doing, but we went around and did some extra training, but, now we got some administrators that could jump in on that right there.
Well, that, and I want to add that if, if we, if we go back, if we bring the kids back, the A students back on VAs and, if we, if we go to a four-day week with a full classroom full of kids, that's one thing. We need to protect Wednesdays for these teachers because we're asking them to do more than they've ever been able to do before. They're operating at a hundred and twenty-five percent of their capacity. And we're asking them to be able to provide instruction for the kids that are there and the kids that are not there. Because if you got a kid that goes on quarantine.
They're on fourteen days.
They're on fourteen days, that teacher has to provide stuff for that fourteen days, that is not a remote virtual student. That's a student from the classroom that the teacher has to prepare for. So protecting that Wednesday is important.
And that is, that is what they do now too, but, and they have that Wednesday.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah, well, that's one of the problems too, the parents don't know, you don't just go to school, like, you turn it in, you got the copy there and do this instead of that. And, and kids don't know.
Sure, we're working on that.
A second grade kid is young.
And we, like I said, the last two weeks, we have gone to every school and did extra training with this, uh, because it is new.
Oh, yeah.
I didn't learn how to drive a car or nothing.
I'll say this, um, on the, on the easy side. It's not just about bringing kids back and doing their five days, you got, I got a situation, I got one teacher that's got two very, 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 very difficult students to deal with, kindergarten, and when she's having to deal with that along with the rest of the class and having to provide the school G and the swivel for five days, there's not enough time to do that. So the Wednesday, if you, if you come to our campus any Wednesday, you're gonna see teachers in a room from the time they get there to the time they leave, they're busting their teeth. And the Wednesday deal, the Wednesday deal, the, the childcare for, for parents is already established for both A and B students. So.
They are over there.
And so that would be, that would be, if you did four days, it would be the most sensible thing to do, because your A students are primarily on A, a lot of them because their parents couldn't do the Thursday, Friday, because of work schedules, but for Wednesdays, everybody's already established on the Wednesday. But I'm telling you, the school G and the swivel aspect of getting assignments loaded and things on there, because of pain. And when you've got difficult kids in a room, my wife has one of them, just an absolutely difficult child. You don't wanna stream a live swivel video while you're having to manage a two or three difficult kindergartners in the classroom and trying to cut and paste the spots to put a video of instruction online. That's why at our school, we doesn't have Wednesdays for the video portion of it, so there's nobody in the classroom. A video, an uninterrupted three, five, ten minute lesson, and then they're able to upload it.
I guess my biggest concern is, is the virtual students, the failure rate is very high across the county and industry. I mean, it's in the ninety percentile of failure rate, the kids doing virtual.
Everybody's, right.
It's struggling. I've, I've, I've got, I know everybody in here's got phone calls, phone calls, phone calls, email, email, and we said we'd relook at it, and we are gonna, we're relooking at it. The, the question is, what's the best route to go, because the safety of the kids and the teachers is number one, the education has to come in there somewhere.
And how, I mean, have, have you made that work?
I know, that's what I'm.
How, how do you make it work?
I mean, we're in times that nobody's ever dealt with.
We learn every day, so it's something new.
You're never gonna please nobody.
I know y'all are in predicament too, because y'all are really the public's voice, I understand that, and we're in predicament, because we're our students, our teacher's voice, but I'm gonna really, really ask y'all to consider our teachers and our staff and, I mean, you know, for bus drivers, I know right now, there's not, or the E sub bus driver, so that's on, that's on force. Me, the principal's got the bus license, Mr. Waits has got the bus license, Coach Drummond, several of the administrators got bus licenses to be able to go with our kids if a, if a bus driver goes there, which I don't mind doing that, but then that puts nobody in campus or administrative. Um, but like I said, this is not a good decision.
It's not an easy way to do, but, and, and this is, and I would.
I'd like to look at doing the four days with the Wednesday, and if things go good through Christmas, then swap back to the five days.
Well, I.
But could we not do that? Do we have to wait nine, at the end of the nine weeks to do that? Because that's not really affecting, it's only that group A and B, they're not, I mean, they would be full-time in the classroom, except on that Wednesday, that one virtual day.
But you gotta get your, you gotta get your bus routes reorganized and.
Bus route would be reorganized, it's just run all week.
I don't think, I don't think that, and if you had to Wednesday, so y'all gotta clean, you clean your buses pretty regularly, give you a every day, give you a time to do that right there, um.
I'm just trying to figure out the hookup, if there would be one, because group A and B, they're going to sit together, and they would just go there Monday, Tuesday, and Thursday, and Friday, what would be the?
We gotta change all the schedule, everybody schedules.
It's the software that we use for attendance, for grades and everything, we got, we've got A classes, we got B classes, and classes, when you start merging things in software, strange things start happening. And I will say that today, just as a full moon, and I don't wanna jinx it, but when, when you start merging that software, everybody's got to have a hard copy just to be sure, because things get, it doesn't always work.
And this is the first time we've used school G.
Yeah.
And the first time we were taking merging anything like that.
Well, and when you moved, and I'll say this, when you moved stuff in I Now, which is our student information system, our, our school G, our star testing, all of our assessments are tied to I Now, so when you start moving things in I Now, things start deleting.
So, so as an administrator, as an administrator, y'all want to see it at the end of the nine weeks, or, or, I mean, what are y'all wanting to see?
At the end of the nine weeks, that way we can.
Perfect.
Well, hey, I'm gonna say this plus, plus, in the nine weeks would give my teachers time, because we're gonna have to move furniture out of classrooms to build space desks out as far as possible, so these three weeks, if, if that's what we decided to do, that would give us time to get logistics for the, the software done, and some of this furniture that, elementary, and I'm speaking elementary, because elementary's got a lot more furniture and stuff in the classroom, to get those out, to get, well, we can make sure we have enough desk, enough space, and get, we're not gonna go hit six feet, but to get as much as we can.
Because I know y'all have moved a lot of stuff into the gym, your station is just slammed full, so it's almost like.
But I wanna go back and answer our question, at the end of this, at the end of the nine weeks, we can finish a grading period, issue grades, we can do transcripts, and have those, you know, it's, it's done, it's locked, it's nice and packaged, and it's finished, then we can start with the blended class, A and B classes together.
And I'll say this, if, when it happens, I'm gonna ask if they're done on Thursday, a Thursday to Friday. And the reason why not Monday is, we start school on Thursday, so if you start on Monday, your Monday, Tuesday kids are gonna be a week behind their Thursday, Friday.
Well, the reason we said Monday, because the nine weeks ends on Thursday.
Right.
And you would, the first day of the nine weeks would, if you, if you don't do that, you're, you're in November before you, before you bring them back.
Your student will be a week behind, because even though the nine week period ended, we're still moving forward in construction.
Well, that week's gonna, y'all don't do it as much, I guess.
I would also start, the last day of the grading period is twenty-second, I would start at twenty-second.
Would you bump, could we, does the board not have the power to change it from twenty-second back to the twentieth?
That's an easy question for Margie to answer. If she was, I'm not gonna ask her from Margie of how easy it is to change that, but I guess what we could say, if we wanna go.
Oh, I know that.
Ben?
I would like you all, I, I understand the immense pressure that we are all under in terms of our students' academic performance, and I hear everything that you're saying in terms of how our kids are performing, and they were out, um, March all the way to August. That's a lot of, um, time lost construction wise, but when I think of my faculty in, in particular, I have a lot of elderly, I have people who have, um, spouses at home, on dialysis, who have underlying condition, and I myself am a diabetic, and we do everything we can to make sure that we're safe and that we're keeping our students safe. And I would like for you guys to reconsider trying to rush into this bringing everybody back at once, and it's like I told Mr. Jacob, I, of all people, I want to come back, I want some sense of normalcy, I want our kids in front of teachers being taught. You know, and it's been a challenge, um, for every last one of us, but rushing it through, due to the immense pressure, I just think that we would be making a mistake just not waiting until the end of the nine weeks. I just ask that you guys allow us, like the gentleman here said, to wrap up this nine week period, make sure that our grades and our transcripts and all of that is in order, and prepare, and give the teachers time to prepare to get back to the four day work week or five hour week that you guys want us coming back. We just need to, to, to give our teachers time to process.
And I will, I will talk to Margie and Jennifer tomorrow and say, look, I, I see your point that Thursday, Friday kids are gonna get two extra days or full-time more than.
Because of Labor Day and.
So I will, I will ask her, you know, what the, what would be the logistical problem we're sliding it back. Uh, so I think if we make a recommendation tonight, we can say during that week, you know, that we will, whenever the nine weeks ends, and that, and that date could vary about three or four days.
But let me say, now, the kids if wanna stay virtual, they can stay virtual.
They can stay virtual.
The next nine weeks, I mean, you know.
Right, and you, you may actually have, you could have some that come two days, that really, your parents are okay with two days, and that, so we may have some that wanna, there may be a little transition from there too, you know, there, there's gonna be some that wanna come off of, uh, virtual, because we said that we were gonna do that at grade changes. We've done some, especially with special ed populations and things like that, we've had some of those come back, and we've had some issues like, um, you know, we've had some that come back in high school, and then we've had issues trying to fit them into their schedule at the career center, because they had something that didn't.
Give transfer, give, give transfers in, you know, we just get them all the time, you know.
So, uh.
But it's, you know, I'm like John, we, we got kids, we, we gotta get them in spirit, we gotta do that, because all these kids ain't getting no better.
Let me ask that, oh, my question, is there any difference between, uh, you know, nine through twelve, that's when your grades start counting? And you know, that, that's one thing that's affecting GPAs and stuff like that, kids that have always learned in the classroom, certain GPAs and stuff like that, passing and failing, they're having a hard time, but some of them's getting better, uh, it's getting them started back, and I'll ask Ms. Carlyle this question, is there any difference between the nine through twelve and the younger kids, maybe the nine through twelve would be easier to come back quicker, or it's all the same?
I think the younger kids are the ones having the most trouble.
Well, I think, wait, now, you go ahead and answer, Lori, and then I'll.
Oh, I'm, I don't really say this, I'm.
And I, and I think academically, I think academically, I don't disagree with you, but I think if we're, if we try to do a schedule where we got a A schedule, a B schedule, and then a combined schedule in the same student management system, it will be a mess.
I miss what you discussed, but I would say that I would add, because I see where it's going, wherever we stop, we didn't have to stop on a Q study, and maybe give the teachers Wednesday, and then everybody come back Thursday. I don't think that's already, so it's even.
That's what I said, because you start on Monday, your Thursday, Friday kids will be a week ahead.
We need to stop on a Tuesday, because we started on Thursday.
That would go back to my original thing of the twenty-sixth, and I, and I.
I'm just saying, you know, and if, we can still take that Wednesday off, to get a transition, you know, we're gonna put more gas back in classrooms,
it's gonna be a transition period, and then bring them all back on Thursday, and whatever point that happens, it's, I'm not saying, but, but whenever it does, we need to end on Tuesdays, and all of them come back on Thursday, why we starting school on Thursday?
Lucky two, uh, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday.
Yeah, the Wednesday off.
Yeah, Wednesday off.
Wednesday off. The teachers are gonna need.
Wednesday, we have four days, Wednesday off. We've got twenty parents out there that told us what they said, I'd hate to make this decision before we talked to them.
Well, that's what they want, four or five days.
Some of them want five, some of them want four, some of them want, I mean, should we wait until?
It is, it, it'll sort of ease us to see, it's a test period, just to see if it's gonna work, and if it works, we continue, if it's not, we stop.
I think that might be sustainable, and we're looking for something sustainable, and that might be an answer, perhaps something more sustainable.
Yeah.
Can, can we go, at the end of the meeting, I hate to vote, and you.
Well, either we let them talk first, then we'll.
That's right, that's right.
We can't vote.
Otherwise, we just.
No, we're talking about when we get to.
We just change, we just change the other agenda, because, you know, we actually put it on the first thing, on the, on the agenda.
The crowd will be the thing to make this negative, you're still gonna be around all your kids, some more money in Houston, somewhere in Thursday, Friday. You're not gonna have any new students, you know, few, but you still, you're not gonna be as close to them. Except close.
There's not a perfect answer.
There's not.
No, no, hang on. And I, probably, I read, I get a, I get a email every day from the superintendents association that's news about superintend, about superintendents and what's happening, and folks is changing every day. You know, we may go back four days, and we may have an outbreak, and, and we may be virtual first week in November, and then we may be shut down, you know, there's a lot of people that are talking about shutting down, claiming they ain't giving any Christmas.
Well, that girl heard today, sky's falling chicken, but we don't know. We don't, you know, we just, you gotta shoot in the dark, but we got to start something, we got. My grandson's never had a problem with school, but he's taught.
I need me to talk to her and tell her what we're discussing, and I, I think she will, I told her that, I felt like, and she would. I mean, do we want to let her speak before we call the board?
Why not? I, I don't see why not.
Well, anybody else is speaking.
Anybody else is.
I just, then I'm in the state first, then we'll call, we'll stop, we'll stop it and start four week.
Hey, hey, John.
So that'd be, that'd be, listen. We got to start four week.
This is, well, we're not.
One of the biggest concerns in, in doing the whole thing, we would start, is, you know, what, well, it's whether we finally start. I am concerned about transportation, but that's just one thing, I think that's a, and, uh, and particularly, like, Logan said, excuse me.
Y'all want to take a break for a minute while I get them in and.
Make it quick, you got sixty seconds.
What's safety, we don't want a bus driver.
Sixty seconds, sixty seconds.
How do we handle that?
We just have to handle it when it gets here. My buddy Riggers in a fell said, you gotta take one life hanging and do the best you can. And sometimes you win, sometimes you lose, sometimes you get things out, and sometimes you play them. And I played a lot of them, my.
Uh, we're gonna, we're gonna let y'all, the one that came to speak, um, Ms. Mary, and two of them. Uh, if you wanna come on up to speak, um, before we call the board, that way we can, you just come right up here.
Wherever you're coming.
I'm, I'm good with just right here, so I'm gonna keep it kind of quick, to the point and, and minimal, but I wanna start by saying that I know that there's, I know that the conversation's open to the five days a week, um, but I know that there's reservations that have to be considered going into it. um, but I know that there's reservations that have to be considered going into it. Um, and I'll start by saying, I work with COVID positive patients every day. I specialize in swallowing disorders. I'm doing swallowing evaluations as soon as they come off the vent. PPE and protecting yourself, a personal hand hygiene and mask, it, it works. Like, we carry it out across our Tanner system, it works. It's just a matter of doing it. So if a reservation is, the, the, the teacher population that's more susceptible, they're already wearing the mask, and it's the constant hand sanitation. And I know that it gets, uh, mundane, I know that it's monotonous, but like you literally, you touch a door, you clean your hands. You touch a child's pencil, you clean your hands. You go through and do backpack checks, you clean your hands. That's just how, that's how this has to work. Um, as far as the low teacher sub pool, I think that that's valid, but I also think that we can meet that concern with coming to the table with like, what can we do to combat that? So if it's a, if it's an issue of not having a huge sub tool, uh, pool, then, then let's, let's get some thoughts together. If, for example, if you have a, a teacher sub pool of whatever the designated number is, and you specify that when you get to a certain number, that's, that's considered your critical number. Well, if you get to that point, because you're having to utilize so many subs, then maybe we need to have like a second tier plan, where maybe at that point, it's a matter of, okay, we may have to look at taking two classrooms, utilizing a gym, spacing them out, and then only having to have one sub for two classrooms who can carry out, maybe even going back to this like virtual type model, but they're able to carry it out within a gym, within the supervision of one sub, so that it's being done in school hours and with support staff there, rather than in a two and a half period of time at home for four or five hours of work that parents are trying to cram into. Um, if, uh, let's see, maybe worst case scenario, if it were to get bad enough where you, where you really did wipe out your teacher sub, which the other schools and, and their progress they're making with their plans, I, I don't know that that's really gonna be the case, but if it is, and we need to have a conversation about it, maybe we need to have a set of pre-volunteered parents who can already have background checks in place, where if we wiped out a sub pool, now we have a pool of, of volunteer parents who can be that gym person with spread out kids, making sure that that work is done. Those are just like things that popped into my mind, but my point is, I think that we can have a conversation about how to combat each reservation that we have for opening five days. Um, school cleaning. If more deep cleaning is desired midweek, and we were in a five day a week kind of schedule, I think, I think I read in some of the meeting notes previously about this CARES Act and the money that's on the table there, that we might could do like night cleaning to do a deep cleaning of the school. Um, for Cleveron County, I know that one hang up was, we're watching Cleveron County to see what they do. Cleveron County's watching us. Cleveron County is watching our county, and that's coming from a family member of their superintendent. So I feel like you have two counties who are at the line, and each one is waiting on the other one to jump. And I feel like we can be the champion of this if we carry it out the right way. I feel like we can own this and rock this five day a week schedule and really champion this. Um, I called Hurd County Schools, and you also have a parent, a vested parent of this county who works in Carroll County Schools, um, and I just got their feedback. When I called the Hurd County Administration, I said, what are you doing to have such high success, which is zero COVID cases in the county? Um, for Carroll County, you have a teacher back there, you're talking fifteen thousand plus kids with less than one percent. What are they doing? We don't have to recreate the wheel. Let's take what's already there, and let's run with it, and let's be proud, um, and let's get these kids back in school. So just some of the things they're doing in Hurd County. Parents, keep your children home if they're sick, if they're any kind of sick. Keep them at home. Um, schools, we need you to support that we're keeping our kids home, and that we're making the right decision and making the right judgment to do that. As a general rule, other schools aren't mixing classes for any reason. They keep the classes separate on the playground, and as far, and, um, just for, um, it, I think here, I'm not sure if any kids are going to the playground. I don't think, my child's a first grader, I don't think any of them are. So we have schools that have great rates, they're still, they're going to the playground, they're just using common sense about it. Sanitizing hands throughout the school day, before and after lunch, um, before and after gym, and before and after any type of exploratory class, like art, music, et cetera. So, um, that, that they're really drilling into these kids, let's clean your hands before you're coming back into the classroom, let's clean them again. Buses, students are sat together by family to kind of minimize any type of, you know, cross carrying of, of any type of virus or illness. Um, they spray children's hands as they get off the bus and as they get out of cars. So anything that could be being brought into the school from other families, they're hitting those kids' hands as soon as they get off their transportation route in the mornings. Um, teachers have to wear masks when in close proximity to the, proximity to students, so that's even more lax than what we're doing. I mean, there's some, some cases of, of, you know, a lot of pressure being put on these teachers, and we know that, I'm sitting here talking, and as I'm talking, you see my mask walking down my face. So we know that this is a struggle. We live in this struggle. But they're asking teachers, look, use common sense. If you are in close proximity to children, you need to have your mask on. You know, if I'm outside and I'm alone, I probably don't necessarily have to wear a mask, but at any rate, when it comes to teacher protection, they can opt to wear their mask all day long, and I'm not saying that, that our county shouldn't, I'm just saying these counties that are proven successful are not necessarily being as, as rigid as, as our county is even. Um, when students leave the room, they bi-rect sanitize any surfaces in the room. So kids leave to go to gym, kids leave to go exploratory class, that teacher is going through any common surfaces, and they're spraying it down. Um, the custodial service, she said, she stressed this, they constantly spray these common areas, doorknobs, light switches, bathroom faucets, tool and flushing handles, any common areas, they're spraying them. Sanitizing stations are placed in the hallways, lunchrooms, and gyms. Um, and then teachers frequently reinforce proper hand hygiene, sneezing into your elbow, um, and, and just general awareness of surface touching, you know, for kids, because they, they don't think anything about where their hands go, so they're constantly kind of preaching and teaching this into the kids. As it relates to what I said previously, sanitizing stations, I think that that is a great idea, because the more you're cleaning your hands of what you could be carrying, the better we are gonna keep this at bay. And again, going back to the CARES Act, I'll look to you guys to, to, to take it further from there, but is that not funds that could pay for something like this? The teacher here from Carroll County, they said that they even, um, have air purifier fine systems in each room, and that school didn't even have to buy them. They did lead work. The admin got out, and they did lead work, and they got people to donate these, parents to help when they could, but they got the, and that's a much bigger school. So I feel certain that we can like open our hearts on how to make this a success, and really set the bar for the, the surrounding counties that are looking to us to make that first jump. That's it.
Ms. Mary, I appreciate, and I appreciate you working with me, you know, when I asked you to compile a list of what you did, and I think you worked really hard on it. A lot of the things you touched on, we're already doing, and some of the things you touched on, we're fixing to approve tonight. You know, we're putting, I think we're gonna, we're gonna vote on putting air scrubbers in every classroom and in every office in the city. So, you know, there are things that we're working on, and I want everybody to realize that, you know, when we originally went to this, we said we would look at it before the end of the nine weeks, and we'd make a decision depending on where we were at, and right now, our numbers have gone up to, been positive the last two, two weeks. You know, tomorrow would be the third week, if we could be, be green or yellow, we'll, we have good numbers.
I think people are also interested in having those numbers published, so we don't kind of feel like that mushroom scenario, we're in the dark.
And I did talk to our nurse today, uh, with what, I saw what, uh, Hurd County's doing with the number of cases, and I went over, and she has a, a sheet here, uh, and I don't mind sharing this with you, but this, uh, you know, this is what our numbers are for, our number of positives for students and for, and for, uh, staff, and how many have been quarantined. So, um, I think a lot of the, I think a lot of things you brought up, we do, and a lot of things that you brought up, we're gonna be doing.
Well, I think that it's, well, maybe it's to our favor now that we've had this many weeks to see this effective in other, you know, neighboring counties and neighboring school systems, so that we're at that pivotal point of, we've seen it work, you know, so we can really go on and, go ahead and jump, go ahead and step out, and, and follow the things that are already been proven to be successful, at least thus far.
And I will, and I will agree with you that when this started six weeks ago, when schools started, nobody knew what we were looking at, and everybody did it some way different, and nobody knew if it was gonna work, and we all said, we're looking to see what's working for somebody else. So, I don't want you to think that your, that your concerns have never been heard. They've always been there, and we have been working for the last two or three weeks on a reopening, you know, plan for where we're at.
I think the only other thing I'll add to that, and I don't want to cause you to, to fall off your train of thought, but we also kind of sit on pins and needles as to the timeframe, and I mentioned that in one of the emails, because, you know, when we find out a week before school what days our kids are going, you know, even if we were lucky enough to say we find, we have found somebody while we're working to, to, you know, to provide childcare, but I'm sorry, person, we can't tell you what days we're gonna need you, that puts a tremendous pressure on, on a parent who's trying to, having to, you know, look to the future to square things away, which brings me to the point of, if it was ever considered to do four days, um, now or even in the future, please keep in mind that that even would carry a major burden, because when you're talking about paying somebody to watch your children so that you can continue to work, pay taxes, and support a school system, it is gonna not be very monetarily motivating for someone to step into that role only getting paid for one day. So just kind of file that away. So sorry.
I was just gonna say, you're an example of following the rules. You work with it every day. The people you work with are positive.
Yes.
And you're doing what you're supposed to do, and you still plan.
Yeah, it's just, it's just getting it through people's heads. Yeah. All right, thank y'all.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Mary, do you have a copy of that, because there was one or two things that.
I kind of thought you would ask, so I made you one.
You brought me one?
Yes.
Because I have the one you emailed me.
I have that. Well, that's actually just, the second page of that is actually just from the other school, so you may not even, I mean, you may not even necessarily need that, but.
There's a copy of that.
Thank you. Another page is something put on the web, on the website, like in that day.
Yeah, that's what I told George. I want to start doing that anyway. You know, and then maybe what was posted on Monday was the previous week to give her time to get the, to get the numbers up.
Uh, we're gonna call the board meeting, uh, order now. Um, if you will, Logan, will you open us up with a word of prayer?
Goodness, thank goodness, day, Lord, thank you for all being blessed and guided. Lord, I just thank you for every individual in this room, Lord, and their concerns for our students, Lord, because they're our number one, Lord. Lord, just, um, as you bless them, their households, their communities, Lord, and, uh, Father, I just pray you, uh, just bless each school, uh, and keep us all safe from this desert virus, Lord, and, Lord, as our board begins to make plans to reopen, God, I pray that you guide our decision making. And, uh, Lord, if you can just put your hedge of protection around our school system, and our kids, and our faculty members, bus drivers, and all those that is involved. Again, we thank you and we pray you, and we pray.
Please.
Pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all, including the kids. Item wants to approve the agenda. Motion to approve.
Motion.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Yeah.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item two is recommend to approve Randolph County Schools to return on what schedule, October?
I'd say four days on October twenty-second, and I'll make sure that we can change that with, uh, make sure that Marjorie and all our folks can get all our paperwork done, and get our A schedules, the B schedules combined, because there'll be a lot to do to get things going.
Just put subject to change at the end of that.
Right.
All right, so we recommend to approve Randolph County Schools to return to a four day a week schedule, and that's gonna be.
It's your big twenty-second.
On October twenty-second, doing what date?
On Thursday.
Doing Monday, Tuesday?
Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday.
Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday, with that, Wednesday to be off, subject to change with the sicknesses or whatever. So, so recommendations approved Randolph County School System to return, four days a week, Monday, Tuesday off, Wednesday, Thursday, and go back to school Thursday, Friday, starting October twenty-second. Can't get a motion, motion to approve.
And then should we add reevaluate?
And reevaluate it?
After Christmas.
After. I, I think we need to look at it every two or three weeks, and we'll keep an eye on where the county stands.
Well, can we monitor that just weekly, because within that timeframe, we may, since we're gonna try to ease back into the, sort of get our teachers a chance to get off, and our computer system and everything, all of our kids is on the different systems of learning, so we can sort of get them back, uh, into the same, uh, schedule. And then, once we do that, and we're not having any outbreak, outbreaks within the same nine weeks, why don't we just move back into the five? So if it's working three weeks down the road, will we move in, why don't we try the five?
Well, I think we start on October twenty-second, about three weeks is getting ready for Thanksgiving.
And then. And you can go four days, one, nine, five.
It's, it just sort of gives us a chance to, to move into.
That's right, that's Christmas, yeah.
We're gonna practice football on Wednesdays.
Yeah, we're gonna practice football.
But, but at least, at least our teachers are just so overburdened, the bus drivers are overburdened.
We are the kids.
And, and, and so it gives teachers, it gives everybody, and, and really.
Or it saves them days, it's better than a broken day.
Yeah, if you could do Monday through Thursday, it'd be better than a broken day in the middle of the week.
Well.
I mean, we're.
It's something part of my childcare for just one day in the middle of the week. I have three kids, I don't know how many of them have.
Yes, me.
But I'm having to pay for each one of them daily.
Well, I have no childcare, and I have four kids.
And, and some childcare places have minimums, so even if they're going one, their parents are paying for like a three minimum.
Five, five.
Yeah.
Five.
Yeah.
Well.
You're paying for five days, and the kids go five days.
Yeah. I mean, that broken day in the middle of the week is just gonna, I mean, who's gonna come and watch our children?
Oh, I need Wednesday off, my kids can't go to school, and I can't get a baby, so ma'am, you're fired.
I mean, they just not know in four, you're gonna do that.
Especially in healthcare, working twelve hours a day.
Exactly.
While we're taking care of the COVID patients, we're having to come home and do.
You're talking twelve hours.
Six hours of homework.
We've still, we've still gotta keep our buildings clean and safe, and that's all.
I volunteer at my house, and I volunteer at my building now. I volunteer every evening, I go to every school, I work. But put these kids back in school five days.
It's not hurting us as much as it's hurting the kids.
Right, and the children.
Not only can they not go to school, they can't play sports either, so they're stuck in the house, looking at each other fight.
If kids can play football.
But we can play football throughout the night.
I, I want to, I want to address sports one time.
But it.
Listen, Jane, sports are voluntary. If I open school, your kid has to come to school. He doesn't, uh, nobody has to participate in a sport, nobody has, nobody has to coach a sport, and no one has to attend an event.
Right.
But if I open school, I'm making your kid go.
Now, there's still a virtual option.
Right.
If we're hurting besides that, to keep their child home, because they're sick or they're coughing or something, what about the truancy of your child missing?
If your child, if your child logs in, if they can, if they call the school and you say they're sick, we're not gonna count that. You can log in one time, and you're counted as a virtual student for the day. If we give you the stuff to make up, that will count.
I think the responsibility back on the parents, if we choose to, to do the virtual skills. But I can't sit through another day of telling my daughter she's not stupid. I can't, and that's, my child is hiding herself because she's failing out of classes because she's never failed out of the course.
Mine.
I work from home, and I'm spending four hours a day teaching my child schoolwork, and she's still crying because.
Mine went straight east.
I, I do understand, and it's, it's new for you, it's new for your work, it's new for us. You know, and we're trying to get through this the best way we can, and try to be as safe as everybody.
If everybody else can do it, we can do it. We're not just a alien invasion.
Everybody else, ha, every situation is a little different, you know.
Not from here, but Rono City School.
Yeah, limited. The difference here in Rono is over a fifty percent of Rono's kids are virtual. So they have, they have.
Well, I'm million of y'all telling accounting.
Rono automatically has, they can social distance, because they have less than half their kids there on any given day.
What about Rono, there's no cases where eight kids in class on a normal day.
We have, we have had our discussion, y'all had your opportunity to speak. Uh, I think every board member here has probably heard from everybody here, you know, we've got messages, emails, social media. I think we all know where y'all stand, and I think we're listening to you, and we're trying to do. And we're trying to do something to get back for y'all and still do what we think is prudent in a safety measure.
But John, what we're trying to tell you is, is a break on Wednesday is not gonna work for no parent in this room.
It's working, it, you're-
It ain't working, it's hard, make it, that's all we're here for.
It's not working.
The board members and board members and have some force against you.
I mean, I'm near the point of having to put my job in like-
I already done it Wednesday. Or pull my kid out of county school is what I'm about to. And if you don't have a kid in the school, and, do you have a kid that's going to school right now?
No.
No, no.
Okay, then you don't understand. And so if you've been put in this situation, you do not understand. A child that's nine years old, that makes a D on every test that she took, and that's made straight A's in school, you don't understand.
We're gonna have them back four days with their teacher.
Monday, Tuesday, okay, Stella, you can just do whatever you want on Wednesday.
I mean-
Monday through Thursday.
I just say, man. I, I, I brought up the concern before you come here about doing it on Friday. Because they're going Monday and Tuesday and Thursday and Friday is a little bit of a problem. But I, I don't have a problem with them. You know, it's gonna be a little bit of hardship going Monday through first, Thursday, and be off Friday, because I understand it. But athletics, you gotta do something. If you're gonna go to school on Friday, you don't play football, but I mean, I guess you'd have to address it, it'd be-
Any day that you wouldn't be in school, you would be virtual.
Hey, Monday off.
A lot of, I think one of the teachers, we could discuss that, and they said Monday would be better than Friday. And I'd rather, I'd like for the principals to address that, or start with Logan, maybe.
Hey, I'll, I'll, I'll stand up. I'll say that for me, I s- I suggested the Wednesday. The reason why that I suggested Wednesday is because childcare, for the most, is already established for both A group and B group on Wednesday. So if we were gonna ease into it four days a week, if we did it on Friday, then a lot of our A, A students have already had their childcare already, already established. In other words, it would be, it would make a hardship for a whole group to, to reenter at a different day than, than a day that's already established.
One parent in that's got it out. That's, that's the whole point of the- I understand that, I, I agree with you on that.
For every, for every, for every point that's been made, there's a counterpoint coming from a, a difficult situation for within the school system. This has not been an arbitrary flippant decision where reason was thrown out the window. Everybody at the central office has worked hard to try to make this right for everybody involved. And I know it doesn't look like that, but they've worked hard to make this right for everybody involved.
What if we turn it back to, to Mr. Harden? Because he was on a discussion of what if we did this for X number of weeks to kind of lead the way, help schools acclimate to the change? So maybe we need to turn it back over to that timeframe's plan.
Well, we just, so, my, my idea was, we sort of ease it back in, making sure everything's taken care of. The technology, our students, or, you know, all of their, uh, different learning platforms sort of come together. And then, we start with that four-day system. And then from that, if we're going to school, our first week works well, our second week works well, we start about thinking about moving into the five days.
Uh, okay, so to the parents, okay, so think about this, if we went to five days, they probably are gonna wanna pursue a deep clean day. Well, they're not gonna just be able to come up with that overnight, because they, they do have the plan. So could we survive a handful of weeks, two, three, maybe four weeks max, of trying to ease in with the four-week plan, survive it while they swear away what the plan's gonna be for a mid-week de-clean, with the gold bean to, to go fully into five?
Right. And that's, that's saying our numbers stay good and we don't have an outbreak.
And I'll, I'll, I'm gonna say something else too. And I'm thinking from an elementary, cause I'm an elementary person. Okay, our kids, and I think the majority of the period have elementary kids, okay? So our kids are still learning to read, they're not reading to learn, okay? So if a kid has to quarantine, that's fourteen days, that teacher has got to prepare something for that child. That's fourteen days that they're missing instruction, which is the whole point behind the swivels. Now, the swivel, video lessons, we have, we're slow to working to it because, hey, we, we didn't get our swivels till a couple days after school started, so then we have training teachers. I've got teachers that are tech savvy, I've got teachers that are not tech savvy. And so we're adding to slowly getting that, or just provide our professional development and those type of things. So what I'm getting at, the four days, and that's easing into it like Mr. Harden said, would give our teachers time to prepare, to, to get their senses together back with the full class, be able to come up with a plan on their own, how they're going to provide instruction for our students, gone fourteen days. But I'm gonna tell you, as a teacher managing a classroom, in an elementary classroom, my wife's a kindergarten teacher, okay? She, she's got two difficult students in there, okay? She don't wanna turn the swivel on to record her lesson to send home to a child for fourteen days while trying to manage these other kids and come in and, and blow confidentiality, those type of things. So that's why our Monday days have been set aside for our teachers to record lessons, um, with no student in the room uninterrupted. And then we can upload that to the, to the school. Now, you're gonna say, well, but he's saying those school, uh, swivel lessons. Well, that, that's, that's part, swivel's basically a robot that, that video records our, our teachers' recorded lesson.
Oh, that's the thing, y'all sent crammed out.
They, they, they take that lesson and they put it on the school log, which is a learning platform.
Do they get a planning period anymore, so that maybe they could do that during a planning period?
They do, but-
There's more that they can do.
I'm telling you.
There's other schools that are using a real virtual, which is where they're like live, the, the children from home are actually logged into the real-time classroom, and they're pulling it off. So I mean, you still have the counter argument.
Our kids don't have that internet access.
They don't have the internet access, it's all done now.
Well, we've been, well, we've been-
That's still a barrier to the public education.
Right. What the tools that we've been given, our school system, we're trying to manage what we got. We just can't go recre- recreate right now.
The tools y'all been giving.
And technically, you could trim the whole period, but you don't want your first grader sitting in front of a, a swivel, in front, or in front of their Chromebook screen for eight hours when you can get five-minute and ten-minute bits of instruction, because instruction only lasts for five or ten minutes and then there's practice. You know, and I think, one of the biggest concerns I've heard from parents is, we don't understand what our kids are supposed to do. Where that's where the swivels can come in, and we're getting our teachers to video, or at least do audio of themselves doing a lesson with something up on a board where you can see it and understand. And there again, we're only taking, talking one day. The teachers may be as simple as to send home a small packet on that Wednesday for kids to work with and not have to worry about, you know, doing that at that time.
But y'all's programs are so above parents' heads that we cannot help our children. We don't help y'all's education.
Books and paper.
School log, let me, let me say this about school log. School log has nothing to do with the pandemic. The state of Alabama changed student management system to school log. There's been a three-year process to do it. School log was voted on by the state school board, and it's here to stay, like it or not. Now, there are things that's good about it and there's things that's not so good. Now, school PLP, where the teachers are getting their lessons from, that is something that was developed by an outside entity right here between June and school starting. It's got its problems. We, we understand it, the state department understands it. When you put that much stuff together for every possible course that you can offer in the state of Alabama, and you do that within a two-month period of time, that's a pretty good feat in itself to get it out there as bad as it is. So, it is what it is. To quote Nick Saban, it is what it is. We gotta deal with it. We're trying to do the best we can with it. I think y'all are trying to do the best we can. It's not gonna be perfect for y'all. It's not gonna be perfect for us. But know that anything that we do and any decision we make has been made in trying to be in the best interest of our kids.
Making these is not in the best interest of the kids.
Well, a child being left for six months already at home because I don't have childcare services is not beneficial for the children. No Red Bull, six months at home for themselves. I come home every night after working eight hours. And I'm not saying that I don't wanna participate in my children because it's my job as a parent, but I am not an educator. I sit at the kitchen table for four and a half hours teaching three kids, three different grade levels, and it is impossible. I have a child that possibly has a reading learning disability. He is so far behind. He doesn't even have to read.
And I understand what you're doing now, but when we come back-
Yeah, but when we come back, they're gonna be so far behind. It's gonna be a possibility that he needs to repeat third grade and he's not in.
I-
And you don't understand, cause you're not in our situation, you can sit here and say on that basis.
But you don't understand our situation either.
We're like, if this, if it is what it is, why can't the virus not just be it?
It is what it is.
And we resume normal?
It's not being, it's not, we're gonna have to explosive.
Well, I guess, I guess just, I guess just to say, throw it all out the window, depends on whose loved one is laying there in bed fixing the diaper, who has died.
Nobody's saying it's not serious.
Well, that's what I-
We know how serious it is, it's not real, but we can't be afraid of it for the rest of our lives.
Hey, we didn't shut this school down for eight years. We didn't shut down this one.
You don't, you don't have a time is for the blue lights or we don't have a few days left?
Alright, now, let's, let's get back on-
I don't think it's also beneficial for the child, her teacher that teaches on a computer and sits at a desk and doesn't do anything, but monitors the child. She's a glorified babysitter because she records her lesson on the computer and doesn't teach. My child was a straight A on all students, and he is, is frustrated with the online learning. He's like, I don't get it. The teacher doesn't teach. She records and that's it. It is what it is.
She asked, Ms. Jacob, I got something to say. Um, I guess I would say I'm lucky enough to be a stay-at-home mom. I get to stay at home with my, well, she's, she's out of school, but I do have a senior in Hanley, and I have a first grader. This all started for him in kindergarten, so he didn't really get to learn the fundamentals. And I do have a note from today, bless his heart. This morning, he knew his spelling words with me. He goes Thursdays and Fridays. And I do get to stay at home with him, and I have been the meanest mom in the world to make him sit down and do this, but we argue, we fight, sometimes I have to tell him to go play. So, cause I, I am not, I'm not a teacher.
Amen.
I cannot, I'm sorry. You've been with me my whole life.
I tried to beat you to it one time.
Yeah. I can, I cannot fail. I have to ask my twenty-year-old sometime, but it's a mom brain. But what I'm saying is, is his note today said, and kind of broke my heart. It says that he had, he, he made a zero. But this morning, he knew him with me, me and him speaking together. And in his lesson right here, you can see that. He has his little, his little calendar, and Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday, we just do a packet. We do a packet, the same packet, and he can reach through that packet, cause we've been doing it for weeks. I don't feel like he's learning from it, but I try. Okay, so anyway, his note literally said, I have the note. He had a mental breakdown during this test. I went very slow and said the words many times, and wrote this down to part many times. I even stood at his desk and pointed, guided, and broke sounds apart extra. Um, I would make the first sound and tell him to write the letter as I went. And he just kept, and this broke my heart, he just kept crying and saying, I can't do it. I told him we would try again tomorrow. The thing is, is I do, I do the work. I do get to sit at home. Um, but come Thursday and Friday, you don't wanna go to school after being at home for three days. We do it at home, I sit at home with him, we read, we, we do what we have to do, we get on the computer. Our computer isn't set up for the school all of these stuff yet, but we do have it from Ronald Mills. ABC Miles, he's, he loves it, he stays on it for hours. But I can't, he is a first grader who doesn't know how to read. We don't know how to read yet.
I'm with her. We said, we all try to get in this.
I just feel like he needs more schooling. If I could keep, you know me, I'd keep my kid at home.
My nigga's saying, if we're having to stay at home and teach our kids, which we don't have a degree in, you can't be a teacher without a degree, you know what I'm saying? But I can't, I can't take care of your loved ones that are now with COVID if I'm at home with my kid. As are all the rest of the nurses out here. It sucks.
We're gonna die, it don't make no difference. We're gonna get attacked.
Let me, let me ask one thing, and maybe, maybe this will, will help some things. Uh, you know, I'm, I'm an old teacher. Came through in a different time. Teachers, they tested what they taught, you know, which, you know, I still kind of go by those old codes. I feel like, if I teach it, I, I know what you should know, and I know how to grade you from it. Since, since the kids are having a difficult time with lessons, grades, maybe there's some compromise on both of this area. Is there some way, teachers, and I don't, I'm, you know, I, I don't know all the ins of school, which, I don't know exactly. I know it calculates some grades and things like that, but is there any way, the teacher used to, teachers assigned grades? It, it wasn't a machine that determined what my child made. It was a teacher look, looking at it that said, you know, you may have missed this, but we're gonna, we're gonna work on this, and you come in at break, or you leave me after school for fifteen minutes, and I'm gonna ask you this again. And we, you know, we sort of work with that child and that child in particular in these. Is there any way our teachers can sort of override that and teachers assign grades?
Yeah, they have to put their grades in eye now. Cause school log does an automatic transfer over.
We're less than the percentage. So my daughter has had one test that she, she bombed. So she's making a D because that's seventy percent of her grade. Seventy percent of her work is not that test. I can show you the seventy percent of her work that we're doing four hours a night, four hours a night. That should be the A for effort.
And I mean it.
So if that work, we can have some compromise. Can we lessen the percentage of the test grade on new test field, because they're only getting two days. I, I, I can, I can do that, because my daughter's doing the work. She's just, when she gets into class, she's so frustrated, she's so overwhelmed, she's not testing.
We probably all had that professor when we were in school. Billy's pointing at me.
I was gonna, I was like, I think I nailed it.
But anyway, there's, there's probably somebody, there's, there's probably, has, there's probably some people who, when they teach, they, they sort of go beyond whatever, and they may focus on certain things. It goes back to that, just, just test what you teach and assign your grades.
I, I think we just need to see, I think we, I think we're on board that we, you know, we could do the four days if it's, it's almost speeding into the five, so we can save the line at the end of the month.
Would that make y'all feel better?
If, if y'all can do, and let us, and let's see what happens, let's see if we- I'm gonna, I'm gonna make a motion right here. I'm gonna start right here. To recommend that, that we approve the Randolph County Schools return five-days-a-week schedule beginning October twenty-second.
Yes. You understand, your kids don't all day a week, y'all. Alright, you understand?
Y'all get a sec. Second. All in favor?
Ah, bless it.
I, I say, yeah. I mean, we voting now. Is that, is that hard?
You gotta vote.
Vote by hand, show, show hands for, for, for five days a week.
For five days, October twenty-second. How much time is that gonna give our teachers to get three weeks? Let's go back five days.
Yeah.
Gotta stand it.
Five. Five, five. So you're four, so one, two, three, four, five to one, we're gonna back five days a week.
Y'all, I want y'all to do as good a job talking to your parents about keeping their kids at home and things like that, if y'all, cause y'all got a pretty good group right here. I want y'all to understand that our other recommendations was not against y'all. It was just different considerations that we had to follow.
The also is, if the kid that wants to go virtual can still stay virtual for a go virtual, they can still do that. But the kids that come, that wanna come back to school or that's in school, they will report five days.
I'd like to also just call accountability to us as parents. I mean, we all have an option when we leave here of what we're gonna put on social media. And what we've seen is, is a, is a board of people that prefer us. They just, they did not have to let, they did not have to let me talk, and they certainly did not let, have to let anybody else talk. So we can leave here and we can call our, you know, our friends in the community and say, here's what we've gotta do. We've gotta keep these sick kids home, we have gotta teach these kids- We have gotta teach these kids human hygiene and we have got to make this a success so that we can stay the course for what we just achieved. If we drop the ball, then, then this all could be up under the rug. So we've got to, I'm just asking all of you leaving here to really consider this, um, you know, as we project this to the community.
All I have to say is you better take allergies really serious because that's why you're permanent.
Because if it blows up.
If it blows up, it'll probably be something different.
We blow up, they probably won't be a virtual. I mean, they won't be a blowing option next time. It'll be full. The next, the next one, if it blows up on us, it'll be full virtual. And I don't think anybody wants that. None, none of us certainly won't.
What about counseling intervention? And, and are counselors going into those, primarily, I mean, they probably need to go in every class, don't get me wrong. But at least K through six, these sort of go in and maybe talk to the kids. Sort of use some of that anxiety about race and things like that.
Right now, right now, ourselves, our counselors, our counselors are heated up with kid, uh, enrolling kids and disenrolling kids swapping back.
Well, and I would like, I like to say, I know a lot of people, virtuals failing period. I mean, it's, it's statewide, it's everywhere they do virtuals are failing. And if there's a way, I don't know, any way with the help when they get back to school, try to pull their grades up, I don't know. I've got two kids, this, and the thing is, you're talking about computer education. When I was in school, Mr. Harv, he was my teacher, we had textbooks. We wrote tests, but that's not the world today. And everybody's in that same world. And if there's any way where they can help, we can help get their grades up where they need to be, where they pass. That's the goal. I mean, we can't have failing students.
And we appreciate, we appreciate y'all coming. We've got other business, y'all are welcome to stay for the rest of the board meeting, but we've got several more items. We have a lady, we've got to send back on that. So, I should have hit you first, Brad, I'm sorry.
I do have something I really need to bring up since we're going back to school. My child has not been in school since the second hour of the first day because of these right here. What, what are we gonna do about this?
They gotta wear a fortuitous governor. They're gonna have to wear it. Governor's mask.
But if they don't, what happens?
The governor's mask has been extended through all over the.
She, you gotta wear it, too.
I didn't vote on it and you didn't vote on it and make it a law, so it's not a law.
There's been a lawsuit filed against the governor, so we'll see what happens with that. But right now, there is a mask order in place.
The small children.
Mask order's in place, and if they're second grade and above, they have to wear a mask.
Second grade refuses to wear it.
We got a second grader. He's gonna stay at home. He better, if he comes to school, he's gonna try to keep his mask on. I mean, I think, and it's at least, I, I understand that. I got a first grader, I got a first grader, and I understand his heart.
First grader can't get COVID.
Yeah, first graders.
Anyway, we're gonna go on with our meeting. Like I said, you're welcome to stay if you want to stay. Thank you for coming.
Item number three is approved, minutes August thirteenth, September eighth, September tenth, board meeting, most approved. And is the second, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Item four, presentation of the financial report for August twenty twenty. You got them in an email last week. Anybody got any questions from Ms. Waters? If not, we will move forward with it. Who is now is the presentation of the FY nineteen audit examiner of public.
Brad, I apologize for, I thought that, that would go pretty quick. You know what happens when you think sometimes? When you assume we go quick.
Oh, wait, so now y'all turn here?
We had, we had a lot of curriculum questions while we were there.
Who is now is the presentation of the FY nineteen audit examiner of public.
Brad, I apologize for, I thought that, that would go pretty quick. You know what happens when you think sometimes? When you assume we go quick.
Oh, wait, so now y'all turn here?
We had, we had a lot of curriculum questions while we were there.
All right, I'm reading up charts, I work for the study examiners, and I'm here to present the two thousand nineteen audit. In accordance with the provisions of Act two thousand six dash one ninety six, Act of Alabama, commonly referred to as the School Political Accountability Act, I'm here to present our audit on the Randolph County Board of Education covering the period October first, two thousand eighteen through September thirty, two thousand nineteen. The audit was released to the public on September eighteenth, twenty twenty, on our website, wwwexaminers.alabama.gov. We conducted our audit in accordance with generally accepted auditing standards and government auditing standards for the purpose of rendering an opinion on the financial statements and to determine whether the board complied with applicable laws and regulations. We also conducted an audit of the board's federal financial assistance programs in accordance with the provisions of Title II U.S. Code of Federal Regulations Part two hundred Uniform Administrative Requirements, College Pencils and Audit Requirements for Federal Awards Uniform Guidance. We issued an unmodified opinion on the board's financial statements as of and for the period ended September thirty, two thousand nineteen. This means that the financial statements are presented fairly in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. We also noted no matters indicate that the board did not comply in all mature respects with applicable laws and regulations. In addition, we issued an unmodified opinion on the board's major federal financial assistance program. The board's major federal financial assistance program for the child nutrition cluster and the social education cluster. Thank you for allowing me to present this.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, sir.
You can stay if you wish.
Get again, I'm sorry.
No, no, it's fine. Y'all have a good night.
Don't remember that if you come back to us.
Let's see that. We've already took care of item six. Number seven, superintendent.
Well, I'd like to, uh, frag on our transportation department a little bit of our forty eight county buses and the ten Roanoke City buses that we upkeep. There were no major deficiencies in that, so we really appreciate the work they do over there. Uh, the sense of bold, I know you guys were, uh, keeping up with that. We made it to the third round, which, and we got beat in the fourth round in Talafoosa County, but we did qualify to, uh, win twenty thousand dollars for the students of Randolph County. Now that it would be to be split with, between us and Roanoke City. So I talked to, uh, Mr. Markham today and told Ms. Waters and talked to Kaylin. He had been planning on trying to put some, uh, new set of cameras over there. We got all of our, our high schools previously, we didn't have enough funds to do that. So we have decided that we're gonna commit that twenty thousand dollars toward a new camera system at the Career Center, which, uh, services all of our kids and the Roanoke City kids, too. Now, that won't cover all of it, but, and there'll be an additional charge that will split on our sixty forty, you know, with Roanoke City on that. Bond, the bond money, uh, first, it was gonna come out October, now they're talking November. They haven't sold bonds yet. We're scheduled to get two point seven five million dollars for our system. Uh, I've met with the architects. They have some preliminary drawings on a couple of campuses, things we're gonna do, and some roofing. If y'all want me to, I'll run over those projects right quick. Uh, they were on the Capitol plan, but do y'all kind of remember what they were? You want me to run over them right quick? Right? I gave you the sheet with weekly COVID count for schools. I talked about the Desper County, uh, Couso Valley RC and D, I think everybody's pretty well familiar with that group. It's been very good to our county over the years. We got a nine thousand dollar grant for COVID supplies and that will be split. That is for us in Roanoke City, too, but we will be the issuing agency for that. They'll get us the, the money and we'll do a, a purchase. I talked with Mr. Markham about that and we're just gonna, uh, purchase a variety of different cleaning supplies and we'll just split those with them. If any of you have students in high school sixteen years and up, the county's looking for poll workers. There's a training session. If, uh, if you're interested in it, you can come, kids can contact their social studies teachers through school or contact George Diamond over at the courthouse. We would give a sixteen year old, we would give them an excused absence for that day. If a student is eighteen years old or older, and a student, they can be paid a hundred or a hundred twenty, whatever, whatever poll worker's made. It's, it's a pretty good, a pretty good little paycheck.
Nine sixteen dollar a year.
It, it's over a hundred dollars. I asked George and I figured to do that, too. So if you know anybody interested in that, you can get, uh, with us on that. And I think we would, you know, that would be an excuse day where they could go out and it would be a great way to learn a little bit about the electoral system, you know, that we have going. Uh, up at Woodland, Senator Price had got a grant, or gave, given them some money, seventy two hundred dollars for working that playground. Uh, they had ordered the equipment and, which, a couple of guys are still here to hear this, they were there, but we wrote them a check out of our central office for that amount until the price is well enough where they can get that money to us because they, the company would not, uh, let them have the equipment until it was paid for and full. And y'all still ain't got the check yet, have you? Mr. Markham, talk.
He actually gave us fifteen hundred more.
Oh, he did? Okay. So he ended up and gave eighty seven hundred in it? Okay, well, that's good. That really helped y'all out, I know. Uh, that's what I have on this. Does anybody have any questions? All right, I'll go. Number eight, uh, we have to select a delegate and an alternate for the AASB Annual Convention and Delegate Assembly to be held on December third through the fifth, twenty twenty in Birmingham. And you can do it two ways. You can actually still go to the convention and vote up there, or you can do it virtually. Is anybody planning on going to the AASB convention in December?
Mr. Boynton Tammer, she's out here.
I think Tammer usually goes anywhere.
I think that, I talked to her up there last year. Uh, and we have to have an alternate in case she doesn't go.
Somebody retired their hair on.
Somebody.
You retired, but y'all can.
Tag team, back again.
And you can do, and you can do it virtually, she can't go.
She'll, she'll go, so I'll say.
So you're gonna be number two?
Yeah.
I always be it.
I've been called, or.
He'll let you ride with it, you just sign up to it.
I've had my enough meetings.
I have too.
Number nine, I'd like to recommend to approve the intergovernmental agreement with the Jefferson County Regional Purchasing Cooperative, cost of two hundred and two dollars and ninety six cents a year. And what this PACA does is, uh, you see the air scrubbers on down the, on down the line, they have a bid set through them and we can purchase through this group without having to go through the fit, fit process and get those things in and it really speeds up the prices. You know, price is right there for what we get when we bid it anyway. So I'd like to recommend for us to get into that, to that group. And there are other purchases, too. Have you looked at what all they have?
I would agree, but I can't really remember, but back in the wild.
Item, uh, recommend to approve the intergovernmental agreement with the Jefferson County Regional Purchasing Cooperative at the cost of two hundred and two dollars and ninety six cents a year. That's a motion.
Motion.
Second.
Second.
All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries.
Number ten, recommend to approve the contract with Marilyn Whitlow to provide services defined, defined by the Mental Health Coordinator Job Description in Randolph County Board of Education for the two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty one school year. Uh, I sent y'all a copy of that, uh, by email. Mr. McCain brought forth a, a couple of issues, so we did, we did tweak that a little bit and put up, and put some hour restrictions on that.
I, I had, I had some issues with the contract. And, uh, I, I really wish that I really have some questions about this.
Ms. Kelly?
I think she's, she's not.
I think she's still here.
Yes, it's there. What, what we added was an hour of rate and a minimum number.
Minimum hour.
To the.
I just want to look at it, you know, because I had the same question, I mean, I had.
But I know this was grant, this is grant money.
Yeah.
So, I, I, why wouldn't it advertise?
For contract.
Contract.
Because it's contract.
It's put now?
Because it's a contract.
It's not, it's not hard.
Well, I did some checking today and I also did some, uh, I've got some friends who are attorneys and stuff. It appears, I know the legislature approved this, but I think it was federal money. Uh, and, and from what I understand, if I look at the, uh, I can't even pull it up, I just did. If I look at the application itself, at the application, it appears as if it is, it's, it's nothing against the candidate, but it, it appears as if this job should be applied. From what I was basically told, that if you partner with your, your local mental health group, uh, you don't have to advertise it. If you, uh, give it to your, somebody within your own system who's already an employee of the system, you sort of make it, I guess, a part of their, uh, maybe pay them a stipend or something. You wouldn't have to do it. But it, since it's grant money, uh, it should be advertised.
I'll let, I'll let my HR director address that. I, I wish, you know, that, if you had that concern, you could have brought it to us during the day once you was here.
Well, I, I called, I called and asked that same question today and I was told it was a contract. It is a contract, boy, that's all I mean, but I didn't read into the, the grant thing itself.
Well, it's, it's a contract with a clear beginning and ending date, so, I mean, the contract's gonna end.
It's got a beginning date, an ending date, it has a radar.
Yeah, so it's not, she's not expecting continuous support.
Yeah, I understand that, but, I mean, why wouldn't, if somebody else gave an opportunity to make thirty thousand dollars?
Well, I know she reads out to several people because, uh, that were under, that were under the qualifications.
But, but it wasn't made. And, and, and I guess this is part of, I guess this, there's a lot of people, there's a lot of people who might have been interested in this job, but just didn't know about it. I had people who contacted me and, um, because I guess the word sort of got out. And I said, well, we didn't know this was a job that was gonna be for honor. I mean, how did, how did y'all, how did they just fill it and not?
Well, with contracts, I mean, you do that.
Well.
With contracts.
But, but it says in the assurances of the application, it says basically that there would be no discrimination in the employment process. And that was signed and applied and it went in. We got the grant and I, I would think unless you honor the assurance, your agreement with that, then you might have to pay that money back.
Well, I know she talked to many people and that's why, and the reason, that was one reason I sent y'all this contract out two or three weeks ago to look at because, uh, she was gonna do it and be ready to start tomorrow. She was gonna give, she was and did give a notice and her the job and that resigned from it.
I, I think the whole, uh, and if Mary comes, there may be, the whole thing of the contract.
The grant, um, I just talked to Ms. Kelly and, um, she said that the grant, the state grant, she talked to the Mathis State Department and they did recommend that you, that the contract, that we contract this petition out. They told her to, um, talk to several different people and she did, and this was the contract that she made.
It's something about the contract, too, you don't have to, no bit of being.
You don't have to, you don't have to.
And I know we, and you had to be, but how do you have, I mean, how do you claim to be an equal, an equity employer?
That's right.
If you don't, if, if you just hand pick people. Did you, I mean, that's, to me, that's wrong. Did you, I mean, that's, to me, that's wrong.
We're under this order, you know, to keep everything legit.
Yeah.
Legit and up here. And I understand this kind of, you know, is a minority, but there's other minorities out there that said, I didn't know, I didn't get a chance, it wasn't in the paper. And you set yourself up to, to say, you know, how I know, I, I, and I'm just saying, I'm from devil's advocate, you'll say, I wasn't one of the, uh, Ms. Kelly's friends, so I didn't get caught. I'm just, you know, I'm saying, I guess I'm not on any type of list or anything, it's just, it's just a lot of, it's a lot of money during COVID. That somebody sitting at home looking for a job and sitting there, got laid off, don't know if they're going back and we have, we just give somebody a job.
I know, I know she checked because there were pretty strict, uh, requirements.
Well.
You had to have, you had to have either, you had to have a counseling degree, which Darryl could have done that, but then.
Or you.
What they had, you had to be, you had to be a counselor, or you had to have a big social worker with a master's degree.
Could be a nurse, could be a teacher.
No, no.
Yes, yes.
No.
That was in the grant.
That was in, that was in the grant.
I'm telling you what Ms. Kelly, she talked to the state, did it have to be a?
You can pull it up on A S, A S, goodness, Alabama State Department of Education website. The requirements, it, it's there. Um.
Y'all wanna vote on it or table it?
Yeah, can we just go on? But, well, I, I mean, I'm serious. If you have issues, bring them to us before we get to sitting here at the table and we're ready to vote on it. And we've had a lady quit a job, ready for, ready to go to work tomorrow.
Well, nobody should tell somebody they got a job before they comes to the board. We're the one that hires.
Well, and I sent it to you.
I didn't, I didn't say that.
And I said, does anybody have an issue with this?
Well, that's pulling the board. You can't do that, John.
I can tell them if you've got a problem with the contract.
See, I want, this.
I think it needs to be mental health services.
There's, there's.
That's what it, that's what.
There was a lot of.
Mental health services. We just got mental health coordinator.
Well, it's for the coordinator and their physician. We can table it.
It's the services. I mean, all she does is work with different services. She can't counsel a kid. She can't do a lot of stuff.
Yes.
Listen, she.
Well, not in the.
I made a whole, I made a whole list of things that this person.
You gotta be six-year degree in Alabama, the counselor in Scotts.
You have a master.
Huh?
You have a master.
That's a master.
That's a five-year degree. Four years for a B S.
Well, a few years ago it was.
Well, whatever it takes, you know, you would consider a six-year.
First of all, this is a, as the State Department of Education, when I talked to them, this is what I was told. This is a mental health services coordinator. They are basically trained as. Mental health first aiders, first aiders. In other words, that basically means unless they've got a certification. Unless they're a certified individual or they have a, they're a counselor with an L P C. You know, they're a licensed counselor, or they're a licensed therapist, or they're a licensed individual. They can't do anything except coordinate. So they coordinate services. So they just bring people together and they say, from my training. Uh, I, you know, and they gave me an example and it was basically had to do with somebody who was maybe a, a child that got sick at school. And, uh, and they said, um, you know, um, I, I found Johnny, Johnny may be sick. Uh, you need to, uh, send the school nurse down here. That's basically it. They only coordinate services. They can't counsel, they can't, unless they're a licensed counselor.
That's why she was looking for a certified counselor or somebody with social work degree.
That's why, if you advertise, it goes out. It, I mean, and there might have been, have been somebody in Clay County. We have retired counselors here in this system. You just can't. Have in mind who you wanna hire and then hire them. My thing is we're a lot, we're, you know, we have an, we have an obligation. I guess to hold up that we're fair, honest employers. There could be minorities out there, there could be, well, there could be Hispanics out there, could be Asians out there, there could be all kinds. We're not given on the equal opportunity chance.
Well, when we, and I would just say this about most of our contract services, we don't advertise for any of our contract services.
And that probably needs to change. I mean, honestly.
We, we have had people that tutor our students in the past that were just called up on the phone and said, will you tutor kids for us?
Well, I know we're, we're under a consent decree and I think it would be.
We were under consent decree when that happened.
It'd be, it'd be a good faith effort to, to be fair.
Uh, it's just table it, you know.
This, this is my question, do we wanna vote on it or table it? Because in, in this to do.
I think let's table it and let Ms. Kelly talk to, and talk to them.
Because your point is, and I, and I definitely agree, the next three or four things is all contract stuff. So.
In all of these things, there, there's probably some issues with that too, that we need to have some statements in these particular things. Even this, uh, like with this mental health position, one of the things we really need to do is we need to have an attorney draw up our contract. Yep, we really need an attorney.
Well, we're under the contract with the Birmingham Board, or we just don't.
No, we don't, we're not under contract.
We're not under contract.
We don't have a contract.
We're hourly. We started using another group out of, um, Birmingham on our personnel stuff.
A graduate from Woodland that has ties to the county.
Well, we could hire a local attorney to write a contract, then if we're not under contract, if you're under contract, you've got to, you know, throw it in.
But we're not under contract.
This, uh, federal stuff, the only thing I know is on federal stuff, you'd be sued individually as well as.
Every one of our contractors probably need to have a clause in there and it basically, one, they need to have. A personal liability policy of a certain amount. In case something happens and they get injured. They also need to release us a liability. Or, you know, once they sign the contract, they agree to release us, we're all, it's a Randolph County Board of Education, we're all liable. You know, because if they trip and fall out there and then they wanna sue us, I mean, these are all things that we need to sort of look at. And, and you don't really look, think about those things until you, you get sued. And then you're, you know, but when you cross your, you know, dot your i's and cross your t's, then you have everything that's involved with the contract. My con, my issue is this, contract needs to be written, all of these contracts, not just this particular one, but all of these. Need to carry personal liability and they need to sign, uh, a release of liability while they're working for us. Okay?
I don't have, that makes sense.
I, I can, uh, you know, let me sort of go back here. This person is a coun, is not a counselor or a therapy person. They can only do that if they're licensed. They can only work in the school setting, as I was told. They don't do, they work right here. In our school settings. They don't do home business. There's a lot of liability with that. They cannot counsel unless they're a licensed counselor. And technically, this person's not a social worker. They could be one if they're a licensed social worker. The state does not certify anyone in this position. I think there is some kind of, uh. Uh, you receive that particular training, uh, as a first-ager and I think that's basically done through mental health, from what I understand. Uh, they can't conduct faculty meetings because they're not trying. Basically, all they can do is bring together people to have services. And I said, some, to some degree. It, 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 there's some, some things that don't make sense about this. And I, I don't know what, what the state was thinking and I'm sure they were. The, the basic idea was good. But if I'm the counselor at Rock Mills. And the teacher sends word that I need to see Johnny, I'm gonna go up to see Johnny. I don't know that the teacher needs to call up here to the central office and get the mental health coordinator. To then call me to tell me I need to go see Johnny. You know, some things counselors, basically. They're not, they're not administrators. They just bring the services together and that's it.
But this particular person that's here, the people that she had talked to, and I don't know who, I know she talked to numerous people. They, the ones that she talked to fit the description of what they could do, but I, I, either we can, you know.
My recommendation.
I guess we need to table it, you know.
My recommendation would be that we, that we basically re-advertise for this lot, allow. Everybody to reapply and make it available to everybody out there. She might be the only one that applies. But at least we've done what we should do to be. To be upfront and open with everybody in our community and across the state if they wanted to come here and do this job. So that would be what I wish we would do. I, I wish we'd just go back and re-advertise.
Well, and I'm gonna ask, because it was never re, never advertised begin with, I think, right?
You said it was never advertised, you advertised.
Never advertised.
I think we just, I think the best thing to do is to table the whole situation, find out what the grant, I mean, find out what we have to do. If we can advertise and I only, the grant may not be with thirty-one thousand. And then if you got, and if you pay.
I think the grant was up to forty thousand.
And so you're not, you're looking, if that is thirty, say forty thousand, you gotta add another about twenty, twenty-five thousand for benefits.
No, no, no.
Contact person.
Well, I'm talking about, but if you, but if you advertise as an employee, you have to.
Well, we're.
Which way I'm just doing.
Ask for this.
Yeah.
You're gonna have to pay for this.
I mean, uh, so is there some reason that we can't go back and re-advertise this?
Well, it wasn't ever advertised.
Never was advertised.
Well, that's right. Is there no reason we can go back and advertise this and then make it a, well, fair for everyone?
Well, I don't wanna, this is kind of my thought on that and, and I, I, I defer to Mary on this since this is H R. But if, if we're gonna start advertising for that contract, then this one down here for this tutor, we need to advertise for that one.
We probably need to do that.
We're looking for contractors, we could say that in a certain area.
What, don't you?
We could look for contract people in a certain area.
There are some, there are, that's why we do contract with multiple people to do multiple services because. Jimmy may not give a test today and I gotta go get this one over here to give a test.
Jimmy ain't on that game, boy.
But you, you, you see what I'm saying, you have to have, and you've gotta be able to get a contract person sometime on a minute's notice.
Well, can, can the board just not decide to rea, have the job re-advertise?
But my problem is, if we're gonna advertise for this contract position, if we're gonna start a traffic, then we gotta advertise for all of them and. I think that's, I think that's too much to do.
Well, it's a fair thing to do. It's just fair. You may not want to, but hey, are we not obligated to be fair?
I think we need to check to see what, where we're at, how we need to do that.
Just to table it and move on.
Another question I had was, this is the only one I'm seeing, we didn't have an hourly rate.
Yeah, there's, I mean, there was a lot of, a lot of things.
Most of them have got an hourly rate.
All right, I'm gonna move on to number eleven.
All right.
We got tabled.
Move on.
Yeah, I get, I get.
Uh, item ten, recommend to table the approval of the contract with Marilyn Whitlow to provide services defined by the mental health. Coordinator job description for the Randolph County Board of Education during the twenty twenty-one school year. So a motion to table.
Number eleven, recommend, oh, my bad.
You gotta welcome him, you know. I'll move.
Second.
Do we give some clarification?
It's a table?
It's a table, yeah.
Aye.
All in favor of table it? Any opposed? Motion carries.
Number eleven, I'd like to recommend to approve the purchase of two hundred and eighty-three air scrubbers and air purifiers. To be installed in each classroom, gym, auditorium, and office in the school system at the total cost of seventy-seven thousand, six hundred and thirty-three dollars and twenty cents. That'll be paid for through CARES funds. Um, I didn't list them individually because there's about five or six different. Models of scrubbers and purifiers on them, so I just.
We got them up there.
You've got them there, you can see how long it would have taken to.
And that's good prices on them. I looked at one from Ohio.
Item eleven, recommend to approve the purchase of two hundred and eighty-three air scrubbers and air purifiers to be installed in each classroom, gym, auditorium, and office. In the school system at the total cost of seventy-seven thousand, six thirty-three, twenty to be paid with the CARES fund. Motion to approve.
Motion.
I just wondered, does this include libraries, libraries?
Yes, every space.
Every space.
Every space, auditorium, gym.
We ain't gonna leave ya.
Everybody, everybody except the library at Weir.
Well, that's the way they purify when you get a, in fact, you put a ozone generator, ozone kills, everybody gets mold, they'll do that.
Second contact, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Number twelve, recommend to approve the contract with Ashley Bailey to provide tutoring and intervention services at the rate of twenty dollars an hour. For a maximum of four dollars, four hours per day, three days a week.
We might, we might ought to table those too.
Nothing, nothing against.
I don't take a chance with this motion.
Motion to. All right, item twelve, recommend to approve the contract with Ashley Bailey to provide tutors and intervention services at the rate of twenty dollars an hour for a maximum of four hours per day, three days a week. Motion to approve.
Motion.
So have a say. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Well. We, 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 we haven't advertised. We did, we advertised, we never have advertised contracts.
Never.
I just have, I just.
Nobody ever have.
I just don't, I, just because they never have, don't mean it make it right.
You can go, no?
No.
This county's advertised. I don't know if it's an employee or what, this county.
Is it, is she an employee already?
No, she's a student.
She's a what?
She's a college student working on her, uh, education degree. She working really good with kids and she'll be tutoring kids. You know, over at the elementary school or wherever she's needed to help these kids that, right now, that are behind because of the situation we're in.
I think all those need to be advertised.
I, I think that, gosh, we've already got this right here. I'm gonna, I'm gonna make a mo, I'm gonna approve every one of these. I see we, I do see the need to advertise, we could look in the past or something. See, this right, right here, per hour. I'm okay, I'm, I'm okay with per hour, per hour. The other was just, the other was thirty days with a maximum of thirty hours a week. But they, if you didn't come for two weeks, I said you're the maximum, the one I got.
Maximum thirty-one thousand dollars for.
Yeah, but yeah, and, and you know.
And be put in until the funds are gone too.
And, and, and I, and I don't.
We don't want to run over that grant, it'll get in our files.
And I don't wanna get into a big conversation, but I, I, we can look at that after tonight. Right now, these folks are thinking they're fixing, do something. And I'm gonna, I'm gonna make, I'm gonna motion every one of them.
But that one, that, that motion carries four to one. For Mr. Harden? No.
Thirteen, recommend to approve the contract between Joyce Oliver and Keisha Nard to provide nursing, nursing services at the rate of one forty per day. We did that at the last meeting and I put a hundred and twenty, so we need to update that.
Yeah, they're under contract and we approved it at the last meeting, we did stuff.
They just changed it to, to dollars, man.
It's just she. And we wrote a whole new contract.
And she already in the contract.
Yeah, have been under contract for several, several years.
Motion. Recommend, recommend to approve the con, between, I had to read it. Joyce Oliver and Keisha Nard to provide Randolph County, uh, thing, nursing services rate of a hundred and forty dollars. Not he. Got a motion and a say. All in favor?
Motion, second. Oh, I mean, she got a second, I pointed over there.
Oh, I mean, she gets, I pointed over, I thought. All in favor?
A question.
All right. Question.
These are not permanent employees, these are just contract individuals.
Correct.
At the end of the contract, they, why do they not have to, why do we not advertise if that's gonna be another contract? You see what I'm saying?
Sometimes we don't need them, sometimes it goes away, it's just for that period of time, that timeframe. Sometimes it is a reoccurring thing, but then they relook at what's in need.
My, just off the top of my head thinking is, if we start advertising and we hire these people, we're gonna have them in a tenured position after a little while. And if you have them in a.
Tenured position, but if you're not educated.
Well, well, no, you're just.
Not nursing.
It's, it's, it's all in how you write the contract. If you write the contract correctly, then it's not, and, and, and see, part of it is even, there's a lot of those. None of these individuals have the clauses, none of them are carrying the personal liability. I mean, all of those folks need to carry.
And I don't, I don't disagree with what you're saying, and we'll look into it.
So, so all I'm saying is, let's table it, let's look at it, and then let's do it, I mean.
Always be tabling on the nurses, be twenty bucks a day.
Yeah, they are.
That wouldn't take long to get that done.
We could, I could just change it to raise their daily rate, twenty dollars.
There, there's, there's something else in some of those contracts, increase twenty bucks, increase, increase twenty dollars. Remember, did you see that? Did any of y'all see that? Where some of the contracts increased by twenty bucks.
That was what we got, had some parentheses around it.
That needs to be remembered.
It was a little, well, it's not on this, oh, there, it says a hundred and forty a day.
But that was.
We had a hundred and twenty, and had parentheses, and twenty.
Increase twenty, now that was, that was the contract I saw.
So that was.
That was one we sent out, didn't it?
Yeah, yeah, but this one guy. Oh. I couldn't decide. Well, just to get it simple, won't you just recommend we increase the two people's pay to twenty dollars a day? And that gets to the contract, verdicts in there.
Oh, just cancel that.
Well, I'm, I'm gonna change. I'll recommend to approve twenty dollar per day increase for Joyce Oliver and Kisha Nard for the nur, nursing services.
To the rate of a hundred and forty a day.
Hundred, hundred, paid for a hundred and forty, yeah.
You said four forty.
And then, no, and then.
Well, what do you expect?
All right, recommend to approve the increase in pay of twenty dollars a day to Joyce Oliver, Kisha Nard provide nursing services for the rate of a hundred and forty dollars a day. Motion to approve. Thank you. Second. Second. All in favor? All right. Any opposed?
Well, I just think we need to have the contract reviewed, and I think we need to advertise.
Well, like Kisha Nard, if we re-advertise every year, she gonna find another job. I mean, you don't say, if she don't know she's coming, you don't say, you won't find good, good nurses like that, you know, does that make sense?
She worked.
That's the only concern I got.
She worked hard, she worked three, three days, the others maybe worked two, three days.
Well, we need, while we're throwing it up, where it's.
And it works.
And she can quit, or we can quit.
Okay.
You know, not one year.
Joyce, would you like, Joyce, speak to us, please?
I, I, I do want to address that, I understand Mr. Harden's concerns, but if you start advertising for contractors for student nurses that help us, I'm not gonna have any. At this point, I only have three. Kisha does three days a week, and all of those are one, and right now, she's restricted her day due to family issues. I would have the ceiling with passing hidden through the LPs, and then we have our parent nurse that's close. But during this time of COVID, I heard all the parents call. And so we're going back to five days, I just spoke to Ms. Kelly, and we're gonna have an issue. Because we got more kids coming in, we're gonna have to hire a nurse in the women's and the sick.
Well, that's why I said.
If we start trying.
My basic.
I, I understand where you're coming from, people have.
Can we rather folk be in contract where they employed on down the line?
They've been doing this for years, and they're happy when they're all, with the day that they.
But what I'm saying is, they'll be for five years or ten years, you know?
That might turn out we be getting one hundred.
For a school year to continue something, like again, for you to.
They may not wanna commit for ten years, and I may not wanna commit to something for ten years.
Well, you can put a clause in there that it can be terminated. But that way, it would make sure they had a job for the next year, three years, four years.
See, see the, the.
You wouldn't have to put ten years, you could.
They don't, they don't wanna do.
Here, here's my, here's my, if, if we don't treat them all the same.
They're happy doing the day.
With these contract people.
Yeah, but what I'm saying is not have them, every year have to renew their contract.
Treat all the nurses the same.
Yeah, and just go, if they won't leave, they give us thirty day notice.
We should have been, we shouldn't have had contracts drawn.
Then the leaving would be up to them, not up to us.
We should be treating everybody the same.
If they want to leave.
At the end of the year, we advertise, do a new contract. Unless.
Every year we have.
Thirteen.
Unless we have it written in there that they're allowed to continue.
Every year we have to.
And it can be written that way.
Continue as we do. Employing contracts every year. And they know they've got a job, they know they got their three days a week that they like to work, or come to work with their families.
And, and.
And it's cheaper.
Listen, I, I, all these people are great people. I'm just saying, I don't want, I don't wanna vote one way on one and then vote another way on somebody else.
Item fourteen, recommend to approve the contract with Vicky Hare to provide counseling services at Randolph County High School at the rate of thirty-seven dollars and ninety-four cents an hour for eight hundred fifteen hours during the twenty twenty school year. Uh, this is different from last week where that was, where she was a mentor to, to other counselors and things like that. This is strictly, you know, and this is federal funds that comes.
Title money. So that comes.
And I think there'd be this, none of this comes, none of this stuff comes out of general fund, I don't think. Any of it, yeah. Recommend to approve the contract with Vicky Hare to provide counseling services at Randolph County High School at the rate of thirty-seven, ninety-four per hour for eight hundred fifteen hours during the twenty twenty-one school year. Motion to approve.
Motion.
Second.
Second.
John Dunn motion is second to finish.
That's right.
All in favor? All right, any opposed?
I guess, not the one more.
Motion carries four to one. Oh, that's all right.
Number fifteen, recommend to person, to approve the personnel action sheet.
Recom, uh, fifteen, recommend to approve the personnel action sheet, motion to approve.
Motion.
Second.
Second.
All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Item sixteen is motion to adjourn.
I would like President Pratt to say another word before, and we can talk about contracts, and we can talk about this, that we didn't get.
Yeah, we're gonna do that in about two weeks, or, in two weeks, we'll look at it. No. It's gonna be, it's gonna be a workshop, but we'll, we'll have a workshop that the board will. Because in order to do that, we have to do.
I just want to get some time.
Hey, listen, we probably have, we're probably gonna have to have.
All right, let's go with Texas. Get my Texas.
One of the, one of the.
We adjourn here, everybody. Motion to adjourn. Second. All in favor? Feed is adjourned.
We'll have to have another meeting.